Order the full city council meeting that was rescheduled from yesterday to today, so November fourth, two thousand and twenty. The clerk will call the rule for attendance. I will play the clerk for today's meeting. I'll go down. Let's see here. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Counselor Bartley.
Yep.
Counselor Graney.
Here.
Counselor Hernandez.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Present.
Counselor Bor Martinez.
Here.
Counselor Lisi.
Here.
Counselor McGee, here. Counselor McGivern.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Sullivan.
Here.
Counselor Tomlin.
Here.
And Counselor Bacon.
Here.
All right.
Counselor President McGee.
Counselor Lee.
Um, can I make a motion that we skip to the public service, um, uh, line item? Offhand, uh, going to the first round for, um, Brian's position, the administrative assistant role.
All right, so motion is out of order to twelve A, which is public service. Is there a second?
Second.
Bacon.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the committee on public service was referred in order that the public service committee interviewed candidates for the city council administrative assistant position waiting disposition. Uh, with that, Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. So we had a Zoom virtual call, uh, with a bunch of interviews. Uh, as everybody knows, the first one didn't really pan out that well. Um, so we ended up having a second one that, uh, that went extremely well, I thought. And we had a lot of, um, uh, good qualified, uh, participants and people wanting the position. Um, uh, everybody gave a great conversation. Everybody had, uh, I think an enjoyable time. Um, it went much longer than I expected and anticipated. So I think that was a good thing. It was very conversational. Uh, we met a lot of, uh, great people. Um, some people that are, um, um, you know, wanting to go on and go to law school and do other, uh, do other things as well. Um, I'm not sure if you guys all received the email. One of the candidates, which was really qualified, um, is moving out of Hoyok, um, and, um, she's moving. I'm not sure if you guys got that or not, but, um, very, uh, very qualified person. Uh, and having said that, I guess the only other thing I wanted to bring from one of the candidates, one of the applicants, um, um, uh, husband that's on the city council. And, um, but it's no different than, um, they, they checked with a lot of parties on this call. Um, the way it's no different than, um, you know, counselor president Brenna, uh, Damian and, uh, this could happen. She can't, uh, vote anything pertaining to money. Or any of the see a um, so having said that, um, I think that we should go to the first roll or first call.
Mr. President.
Counselor Bacon.
I just have a point of order relative to the position. And that is that my understanding that the range for the position right now caps at either forty thousand or forty two thousand. And I believe the advertisement that was put in, the range went up to something like fifty one thousand. So I think it should be clear that as we're hiring our auditor, we are under the same limitation for this position at this time.
Yeah, I mean, Ryan's current salary is at four thousand and that was, I think. So, uh, Counselor Lisi.
Thanks. I just wanted to say a few words, um, sort of echoing what Counselor Leahy just said, but the quality of candidates that we had coming through for this position, um, really exceeded anything that, that I was expecting. We had, um, you know, people with, uh, legal degrees, people with, you know, um, all sorts of different bachelor's degrees interested in going on to, uh, law school and, um, higher education. So, um, it was really nice. I thought the conversations that we had with all the candidates were, um, really, uh, I mean, just encouraging and motivating for me to be a part of as a, as a counselor. So, um, I do want to thank everybody for applying and for, uh, being part of that, that process.
Anyone further? Counselor Grady.
Nuriya.
Counselor Hernandez.
Jeffrey Burgos.
Counselor Leahy.
Uh, Mr. Jeffrey Burgos.
Counselor Bor Martinez.
Mr. Jeffrey Burgos.
Counselor Lisi.
Uh, Tamara, Tamara Garcia.
Counselor McGee, uh, uh, Anderson Burgos. Mr. McGivern.
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Counselor Murphy.
Tamara Garcia.
Counselor Sullivan.
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Counselor Tomlin.
Tamara Garcia.
Counselor Bacon.
Nuria Satoropoulos.
I have two for Maria.
I think it was three.
Right.
Three for Maria.
Three, three, sorry about that, as I will go down the list. Three for Maria.
Is that Maria or Nuria?
Nuria.
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 Nuria. Six for Anderson Burgos. And three for Tamara.
Right.
Okay. Go to the Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. Uh, before we go to the second ballot, I do want to note that, uh, the communication that we got from Nuria Satoropoulos said that she would be moving out of the city and so would not qualify for the residency requirement. Just as a point of order to make it clear, um, where that communication came from.
That is correct. You have to be, it's an order. It's that you have to be a resident of Hoyok.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to go to the second ballot?
Motion to go to the second ballot.
All right, so.
Second.
So we'll go starting with Counselor Bartley again.
Nuria Satoropoulos.
Counselor Grady.
Nuria.
Counselor Hernandez.
Jeffrey Burgos.
Counselor Leahy.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Jeffrey Burgos.
Counselor Bor Martinez.
Mr. Jeffrey Burgos.
Counselor Lisi.
Uh, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Counselor McGee, uh, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos. Counselor McGivern.
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Counselor Murphy.
Mayor Garcia.
Counselor Sullivan.
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Counselor Tomlin.
Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Counselor Bacon.
Tamara Garcia.
So four for Nuria, if I'm saying that correctly, I apologize. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight for Anderson Burgos. Did I get that correct number wise?
Yep.
Yep. All right. So with eight votes.
There was two for Nuria.
For Anderson Burgos. Oh, did I miss something? I'm sorry. I was counting. I wasn't looking.
So Nuria had two.
Say that again.
Nuria had two.
Nuria had two and Tamara had.
Had two.
Two and two. Okay. Sorry about that. So two, two and eight. So we needed seven with eight votes, uh, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jeffrey.
So that takes us back to item one.
Take item one off the table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item one is from the mayor of veto for the proposal of the one hundred and sixty seventh amendment to chapter two of the city charter.
Make a motion. We move to override the veto.
Second.
Second.
Motion is to vote to override. Uh, under discussion, Counselor Murphy, do you have something?
Yeah, 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 just, uh, I mean, and I think, uh, the mayor's veto, uh, kind of indicates that he doesn't think we'd be in a position to do this, uh, with good management. And I, I disagree. I know one of the concerns was the fire department and I've talked to the fire chief and, uh, in, in fact, in some ways, having to come through us, uh, in terms of overtime would, would provide them opportunities to let us know what the issues they are facing. It will not jeopardize public health. It will not jeopardize how well we do things. If anything, it'll make us more aware of the needs of the various departments and the challenges that they face. And this passed the ordinance committee thirteen to nothing, and I hope that the city council will say, we're not trying to micromanage. We're trying to be, uh, partners in the process and work with department heads, uh, and get a, a clear understanding of their needs. And I will tell you, and I'll use the fire department as an example without mentioning specifics, but there are some major concerns coming down the pike that we need to know. And, uh, through this overtime situation, my gut is we'll find out a lot more and a lot quicker. So I encourage uh, the council to override this veto.
Mr. President.
Counselor Grady.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, support, uh, Counselor Murphy's, uh, 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 thought, and I would also like to add to it that it will also give us a, a better handling on the budget and budgetary issues that come through. Thank you.
Anyone further? Oh, Counselor Bacon, sorry. Hold on, I'm up. I gotta pull up that screen for hands.
That's okay. I don't mind doing it this way. I'm just trying to.
I apologize.
Follow the protocols. Anyway.
Counsel, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you.
Throw something at me.
Um, I just want to emphasize that this was really just a cleanup to the original ordinance because upon review, it had not gone down in the ledger as far as it should have in the first place. And so it wasn't, um, at least intended to be a dramatic, um, endeavor here. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Bor Martinez.
For the purpose of the public, can we, um, kind of read off for the veto purpose? What, 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 what are we going to, uh, veto on or not veto? Can we refresh that, um, reasoning of what we're vetoing here?
Yep. So the full city council voted to, uh, change their rules with regards to overtime and how it has to be, uh, run through the city council. The mayor vetoed it, um, sent in a letter saying that the power vested in him, I have the letter right here, according to chapter or section twenty four of chapter three of the code of ordinances of the city of Hoyok. I'm exercising my veto power over the proposed one hundred and sixty seventh amendment to chapter two of the city charter. While I respect the legislative authority of the council to oversee the financial expenditures of the city, I believe that the passage of this ordinance and the mindset of the ongoing public health emergency would risk the sound operation of city government and the health and the well-being of the city of Hoyok. I humbly request that you should still aim at, uh, to put forth such an ordinance that, uh, will wait until the conclusion of the public health emergency. That was from the mayor. So he vetoed what we approved, uh, thirteen to zero, of which it's coming back to us and we can override that veto if we so choose. That's where we stand.
Mr. President.
Do you have anything else, Counselor Bor Martinez?
No, thank you.
Okay, so Counselor McGivern and then Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm at the last meeting. The reason we tabled this is because I had a point of order on chapter two. My contention, and I remain with this as a point of order, is that we cannot do a amendment to chapter two without the initial approval of the mayor allowing us to change chapter two or the final approval of the mayor allowing us to change chapter two. So therefore I think the, uh, the vote on the floor is out of order.
Counselor Bacon and then Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so further in the agenda, we have a communication from our attorney giving us an opinion relative to that. It's agenda item number three, where she states that we do have this, um, legal authority to override this veto. And I would note that when we initially created the ordinance, it is a chapter two ordinance in totality. And so we created it legally and we, um, based on her opinion, are amending it legally. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley, then Counselor McGivern.
Um, yeah, thank you. I, I, I hope, well, let's, I, I'd just like to make a motion to take three off the table, to suspend the rules, take three off the table and, uh, put it before us so we can talk about it.
I'll second that.
The motion is to go to item three to take it up. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item three is a communication from the law department from Crystal with regards to our question on chapter two. Uh, uh, seeing if we can act, um, with regards to the veto. And she sent a two-page letter detailing all the different rules and in that letter saying that we actually could in rough terms. Crystal is also here. We could suspend the rules for her to answer any questions with regards to her letter, if you would like to do that as well.
Can I make a motion that we receive the letter?
Yep. So motion is to receive. All those in favor?
A- a- actually, uh, uh, could, could I, could I just make a friendly amendment that we, um, that we receive it and we may send a copy to, since I think I saw the floor, uh, receive it and send a copy to finance, please?
Second.
So it's receive and refer a copy to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, let, let me just, if I may, I'm just gonna read the pertinent language, which is on page two. It says, Rule thirty five already requires oversight of appropriations over two hundred dollars and therefore council oversight over appropriations going to overtime light items is not outside the scope of usual council duties. So I, I, I mean, if anybody can make that more clear, I'd love to see him do it. So we, we took the precautionary, and let me just correct the record. We, 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 we passed this ordinance, uh, eleven to one. So it wasn't thirteen zero, it was eleven to one. That's, that was the vote.
Thank you for the correction.
That, no, no, it's all good. Uh, just to, just mi- minor stuff, small potatoes, Mr. President. And I'm not, you know, I don't care, but that's, that's what, that was the actual number. Um, this, we, we took the extra precaution. In fact, I suggested at the last meeting based upon what another member of the council said, that out of, out of the abundance of caution, abundance of caution, let's take the right step. Let's get this before the law department. And now the law department has said emphatically, it is not outside our scope. I, I, I mean, I just think this is a great order that the ward five counselor, uh, uh, developed along with the ordinance committee. I think this is really something to stand up for the city council. Uh, I, I think, I, I think furthermore, uh, I, I, I think the mayor's veto, uh, while we have generally overridden all of his vetoes, I, I think this one was a fairly reasonable argument. I, 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 I don't think the mayor was off the wall wi- with this at all. And, and, and I, and I think that, that shows a, a lot more spirit of cooperation on behalf of the mayor and, and I for one welcome it and I, and I appreciate it. I just disagree. And, and now not only do I disagree, who cares? We went to caution, we took the, the, the snail's pace at the last meeting, Mr. President. We tabled it. We put it before the law department. The law department said going to overtime light items is not outside the scope. So I don't want any other, I mean, other councils are gonna say what they're gonna say, but it's their personal opinion. You know, Mr. President, years ago, I used to work for the state auditors office. And when you audit something, you don't audit it based upon, you know, you feel like it. We audit always to criteria. So criteria would be mass general law or state code, or code of mass regulations or some kind of a, uh, standard in state government. It's not because we believed it to be true or we felt it to be true. There's no relevance to anyone's personal opinion, Mr. President. None whatsoever. Now we have the law department analyzing our charter, our rules, state law. And the law department has said crystal clear, we have the right to do it. I hope that, and, and I hope that all the counselors have voted for it will remember that. So it's not Bartley, it's not anybody else, it's not Bacon, who cares? It's just the, the law department says it. So let's try to keep that in mind because we're supposed to be about laws, not personalities or opinions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor McGivern, then it'll be Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a few things, uh, number one, um, we have a, a opinion from the law department, not signed by a city solicitor. So therefore it is a legal opinion, certainly worth from a good attorney who we all trust and work with very closely. But as you know, we do not have a city solicitor at the moment. Only the city solicitor can sign a legal opinion that covers the city council. I know Crystal was doing the work of this, of the city solicitor. I think the mayor is looking at her as the acting city solicitor. But let's not forget, our duty is to confirm the appointment of a city solicitor and our duty is to confirm an acting city solicitor because of whatever reason the mayor cannot, at this point, put a, a city solicitor candidate before us. Uh, number two, the, the opinion does not get into my objection, which I believe is the, is finance, is, is state finance laws. And I believe, as I said at the last meeting, this precedent was set, has been set with this body and with this city for decades now. And it's an important one because this, this one may, may not be as important as it seems. But when you amend chapter two, that creates appropriations, the legislative body is overstepping their bounds. And that's, that's what I'm afraid of, that we're gonna set a new precedent where we think that we can appropriate money initially without the mayor's approval by sidestepping it and doing it by ordinance. That's why, that's why we have this rule and that's why we, I'm sorry, that's why we have this law that we cannot amend chapter two initially without the mayor's approval upfront. I voted for the original ordinance. I am a co-signer of admitting this ordinance. Make no doubt about it, this is a form of micro-management. I'm in favor of it because at this point in time in this city, we need to step up as, as the legislative body as a checks and balance and do some micromanaging with, with our finances in this city. Because there are problems out there and I think most of us know that. Some of them are pretty serious and some of them are just not being checked by the person who should be checking them. But we cannot overstep our bounds. And with all due respect to Attorney Barnes, who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, we have an opinion from her, but we don't have one from the city solicitor. My objection, I would like a ruling on it. And I would like to talk about the, the logistics of this vote, not why we're voting.
All right, so we'll get to that in a second. Counselor Murphy.
Okay, a- again, and I, I, I have a little respect for Counselor McGivern, but I don't see us making an appropriation here. We would get an appropriation coming from the mayor that we would be able to have oversight on. Uh, and, and a couple of things we did. We amended the original order to have a January first, two thousand and twenty one start date to provide time so that people could make that adjustment if they needed to. Uh, the, the potential concerns that the mayor has to me would be indicating that he doesn't think department heads are watching their budgets on a regular basis. And if they, if that's the case, we got more problems than I think. My gut is department heads are watching their budget on a regular basis and would know well ahead of time, uh, what kind of needs are coming down the road and would be able to communicate those to the mayor and then be able to communicate those and get the support of the city council. And, and, and again, in my opinion, gain, uh, ma- uh, further insight, both for the city council on what's going on, but also for the citizens to let them know what some of the issues are. And again, I, I, I don't want to keep talking to the fire department, but I know there's gonna be issues that are coming down that people would like to be able to know and with the idea that overtime would need to come to the city council, we're gonna get a lot more information uh, in terms of what those needs are and, and some of the problems that are needed, we'll address those needs. And again, I, the idea that we have to have a, a, an official city solicitor to give us an illegal opinion, that may be true, but we're, we're getting legal opinions from uh, the acting city solicitor. And obviously we're using that information to the best of our ability. And, uh, you know, I think, again, I just think we would be wise to override the veto. Uh, let's get the process going. Let's demonstrate that we are partners in the process. Uh, and I agree with Counselor Bartley. I thought the mayor's letter was a, a pretty reasonable letter. Uh, but again, I, I immediately asked, well, w- when it, would that mean you'd be in agreement at another point? And basically my request has been ignored. So, uh, I mean, I do think we, we want to be partners and I do think we have oversight. And again, I, I think it's gonna make us better in terms of working with departments, not worse. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. Um, through the chair to Counselor McGivern. I would just love, like to know, um, you know, this seems to be sort of the, um, the rule. Uh, like this, this sort of like oversight for, um, transfers is, is like the rule for all other line items except for overtime at this point in time. And so I would just be interested in hearing some more thoughts about, uh, whether there's something particular about overtime with, you know, that would create a reason not to apply that same rule to, to that line item. I, I'm, I'm just getting a little bit stuck. Like, is the hangup only on the fact that we don't have a legal opinion from a, you know, seal, sealed letter from a solicitor? Or is, is there something particular about the uh, overtime light items that we should be more wary of?
Is that a question for Counselor McGivern?
I mean, it's through the chair, it's through Counselor McGivern. If he care, if he cares to answer, I would, I would, if he has thoughts on, on that, that I, idea, I would like, I, I would like to hear them.
Counselor McGivern?
At, at your request, Mr. President, and Counselor Lisi's question, no, it's, it's got nothing to do with that. I, I, I sponsored the order. I, I voted for the original ordinance, you know, which is, is what we, we determined. Counselor Bacon, I think, and myself were two of the co-leaders that the original ordinance fell short with some of these interdepartment transfers during the course of a budget year. This, this ordinance is only a couple of years old at best. It's prior to this, interdepartment transfers in the same category, personnel to personnel, expense to expense happened regular. It, it's part of managing your budget to be able to move money around during the course of the year with the mayor's permission and to be able to do it within the same category. We found a lot of discrepancy, not in every department, and, and I don't want to get into the particulars, but we found over the last, you know, five or six years, a lot of discrepancies there where money was moving in and out of items for different reasons that, that, that kind of defied what the purpose is of allowing a department head with the mayor's approval in the middle of the year. And that's why I call it micromanaging, because we are micromanaging. But I'm in favor of that. My, I'm afraid we're gonna throw, you know, the baby out with the bathwater by, by ignoring chapter two and the importance of chapter two. I mean, my, my knowledge of chapter two goes back to when our city court was Jimmy Shea. And, you know, he had an incredible understanding of the charter. He had incredible understanding of state law. And he was one of the, you know, most incredible elected officials this city has ever known. And we have, we have followed this precedent for decades. And, you know, it's, it's, and I think it's, I don't want to oversimplify it, but chapter two is about appropriations. A transfer is an appropriation. When you move something from one line item to another line item, you're taking something that was appropriated for line item A specifically and putting it into line item B specifically. So it, it is an amendment to chapter two. It does deal with appropriations. And I think we have to be real careful. And that's, that's the gist of it. Everything else I'm in favor of because unfortunately I think the time dictates we have to get more involved with, with the, the, the makings, the inner makings of the budget throughout the year.
Thank you.
And, and just for the record, Mr. President, I, I think, you know, Counselor Murphy and I have a lot of respect for him, but, but kind of turned a few things that I said around, you know, I, I'm not talking about, you know, the, the city solicitor's opinion, number one, is, is about covering the body. An umbrella is, is part of what a city solicitor can sign off. Any, and most attorneys, all attorneys write legal opinions. And yes, we, we take them, we can use them, we can read into them. But it does not cover us unless it's signed off by a city solicitor. And that's why we confirm the cities, one of the reasons we confirm the city solicitor. And we don't have one right now. So it is, it's a legal opinion, but it's not a legal opinion that covers us.
Okay, so Counselor Sullivan. Okay, so Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think it's really important, uh, that we, we do have this oversight at this time. We, we've all seen, um, the letters come from certain department heads accusing us of micromanaging. I, I would be very comfortable if there was a audit at any time performed on any of the departments, overtimes and the procedures and how the money's being transferred. But there's never, to my knowledge, been an audit of any of the overtime slips, any of the overtime movements, the, uh, the hours, the time slips, anything. So the only, the, this is our only chance to take a good look at this and see what's going on. If there was a regular audit performed every couple of years, uh, on these departments, I, I'd agree, but right now, there's nothing at all. So this is our only, this is our only chance to have any oversight over it. This isn't micromanaging.
Counselor Bartley.
Thank you.
And then, and then it'll be Counselor LeBron Martinez. I saw your hand go up. So Counselor Bartley.
Oh, I'll, I'll wait. I'll wait for, I'll wait for Gladys.
I just wanted to let her know I saw her put her hand up, uh, cause it's not up on the, the raising hand screen. So I'm just letting her know I saw her. Counselor LeBron Martinez, you wanna go or? You go.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm just, um, curious, how, the Finance Committee, what role do we have as, um, anytime there's, before, um, any fundings are moved around in departments? Um, I know that it goes through us for the voting process, but, I mean, is there anybody working indirectly with the departments to assure that any fundings that are going to be moved before going to, uh, room one? It's passed through us? Cause it seems like there's some dancing around here that, I don't know, it's like an elephant in the room. There's something more that to this. Why are we wanting to micromanage this, uh, this point? Um, and I'm just more curious about that part of it. I think there's more to it than it is this particular moment. I think there's been a lot of departments that we know that they've been putting overtime throughout the years that I've been on this roll. And there's something more behind this. And I think we have to really kind of come forward and I, 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 you know, i- it's like all of a sudden now, we, we, I feel like we're tying, the, the role of a, a, of a mayor or any, or colleague, whoever it is, is to manage a, a, a city. And now we're even, uh, cutting off the, uh, rights to what a management or manager should be doing in a community, in a, in a, in a city. And I, I'm just confused. There's something more behind this than there is us tackling this particular, uh, area right now. So that's my, you know, view on this and I, I just wanna know more. There's gotta be more than what we're doing here.
Alright, so Counselor Bartley, then Counselor Bacon.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, let me lower the hand. Okay. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad, I, I'm glad I had Gladys go before me, cause I, I, uh, I, I, I think she raises an incredibly important point, one that I've been thinking about for a while. So Gladys, thank you. And, and her point that I heard, the initial point was, who among the city councils working with department heads? Through the chair to Gladys, I'm gonna tell you, it doesn't happen that often and your point is excellent. And we should have city counselors designated probably, who wants to work with HPD, HFD, DPW, Oped? Whatever. Uh, I, I, so that's something maybe you and I can talk about down the road. Uh, second of all, the, the question that Gladys raised of micromanagement, that, that's been a term, that's been a phrase that's bandied about tonight. Uh, it's my opinion that when you talk about overtime that goes into hundreds of thousands of dollars to my, to, through the chair to my friend, the Ward One Counselor, I, I don't think hundreds of thousands of dollars is micromanaging. I gotta be honest with you, Gladys. I, I think our, our rule thirty-five item, two hundred dollars, that sure as heck to me, micromanaging, but that's our rule. And if you wanted to co-sponsor something with me down the road to amend that, I, I sure as heck would, uh, be interested in doing that. That's micromanaging. The two, I mean, we've had battles on the floor for two hundred dollars of budget time. I, I mean, I can't, I can't, still can't believe we did that, but we, we've done it multiple occasions. Uh, third of all, um, I, I just want, I know I have two more points. I, I wanna point out that the mayor's veto letter never said one word about chapter two. So please keep that in mind. This is a invented argument that we heard at the last meeting. Again, we took, we took a minute to table it and to go and send it to the Law Department because that was a prudent thing to do. Now, the same counselor who wanted to send it to the Law Department, and you can say, I respect everybody till the day you die, but when the same counselor's undermining the credibility of the Law Department saying that this is not a city solicitor?
I object, Mr. President.
Mister President.
I've been droning at me and I'm tired of it. I object.
Alright, Counselor Bartley has the floor, please.
Thank you very much.
Stop the droning acting at me.
Mi- Mister President.
No names are being used, please.
He's got a name. He's doing it without a name and you know it.
Let's go, let's go, Counselor Bartley.
Mister President, I for one, am gonna stand up for the Law Department to say at the last meeting, let's send it to the Law Department, but the whole time thinking, if we get something that goes our, our, our opposite, that we'll say, well, this really isn't a city solicitor. I mean, how outrageous and, and, and cruel is that? I mean, Crystal's been doing a great job for us. There's opinions that have gone against stuff that I, that, you know, I don't want, but to me, she's a duly licensed, qualified attorney acting as a city solicitor. Though we've not taken a vote, Mr. President, never one time has any counselor tried to undermine her as what happened tonight. I, I, I mean, it just, it just, it's wrong. And so Crystal, I thank you for your past work and your future work. You're a qualified lawyer, whether or not we've taken a vote or not. And by the way, Mister President, that's up to the mayor. The mayor has not put forward a city solicitor. So, so to say anything like that, too bad. You know, be a crybaby, Joe, but you know what?
Well, now you're out of order. You're out of order there.
No, I wanna get my last shot in. Thank you.
You, you can't do that. And I'll confirm one thing. There was no downgrading of the Legal Department or Crystal. It was a matter of not having it signed by a sitting city solicitor to make sure that was a binding opinion. That was his whole goal. That, that's his view. At no point in time did he ever say anything negative about Crystal. Actually, I heard him praise her several times. So I'm just gonna clarify the record there. With that, we're gonna go on to Counselor Bacon, then Counselor Tomlin, then Counselor Hernandez. I see your hand up. Counselor Bacon, you're, Counselor Bacon, you're on mute. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, Mister President. Um, I just wanted to answer, um, Counsel LeBron Martinez's question a little different way, since I was the one that filed the original order. Um, the motivation that I had for filing it was that we had every line included that were for these personnel-related transfers. And when we went down the list of the general ledger or the sheets as you would number them, we did not go far enough to include that particular line, which was the remaining personnel-related line. And so what was happening, we were seeing all of the other ones, but we just weren't seeing that one. And so what's been happening is we go through the budget process, we cut the overtime, but then after we set the budget, the different department heads were able to simply take unfilled positions, take that money and put it into overtime. So at the end of the year, we would find out we spent a lot more on overtime than we thought we would because we didn't know about it. So that was really the motivation of it. It's not really anything deeper than that. It was just like, how did that happen? And it was because we couldn't see it. So that's really the basis of it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. But I think, can I?
Counselor LeBron Martinez, yep?
I think that's, that's what, that's what I'm coming from. I think the transparency of understanding where, you know, we come up with these kind of thoughts and decisions that it makes it, you made it clear now. So I thank you for doing that. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Ca- Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mister, uh, President. I, I, I think I look at this and, um, I, I'm glad that, uh, Counselor Bacon and Counselor McGivern put this forward. And, and I think Counselor Bacon just in the beginning stated that, you know, this is just cleaning it up. There's something that we missed. Uh, and I, I believe this is good government. I believe this is, at this time, this crucial time during the pandemic, it gives us a better understanding of the department heads' needs. And as, as Counselor Murphy stated, that, um, you know, we have to have a, a, a good working relationship with the department heads to find out where the money is going from, uh, as Counselor Bacon stated, from sometimes unfilled positions to overtime, uh, position, to overtime money. Um, and there are several departments, or a couple of departments where, where some officers or some, uh, Fire Department personnel are, are making a good amount of money. And I think this is, this is a way of us keeping track of, uh, the overtime, uh, on, on a, on a regular basis. So I, I, uh, respect the mayor for sending this out to us. Um, but we have a right to, to veto that and I am, uh, definitely in favor of this veto. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez.
You're muted.
It's not, it's not, there you go. There you go.
Um, I just wanna touch back a, a, and, and I, I would like to communicate with everyone here that I am highly offended every time. Do you guys hear me?
Yeah, we hear you. Yep.
I am very offended on how, when sometimes the quorum is brought forward, but not on a consistent basis and it should all be applied. It is not okay to change the narrative how Counselor Bartley does all the time.
We can't, we can't call out people, Counselor. Counselor, we can't call out people. So let's.
He does it all the time.
No, he did not use names to the end. We'll be clear on that. So let's, let's keep it, let's keep it within the rules.
Very offended and it needs to change. So this could be very productive. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern, you have your hand raised?
I do.
Alright, Counselor McGivern will be speaking for the third time.
I only spoke two times, Mister President. You asked me to answer a question the third time.
That is, that, where you spoke two times, that's true, cause one was answering a question. So this will be your second time. Go ahead, Counselor.
Mister President. Mister President, I, I don't wanna keep this going any further. I think it's time that we just move forward, but I, 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 you know, you, you can say things and twist things around and not use the counselor's name, but it's still against our rules. But I'll, I'll defer to you on, on how to act on that. And I agree with, uh, well, I'm gonna stop there. I, I just can't say this enough. Chapter two is one of the most important chapters in our ordinance. Our budget, our financing is based a lot on chapter two in terms of how money is appropriated and spent. And I just don't wanna see us going off the edge and setting a president, a precedent in the wrong direction. I made an objection. I didn't ask for a legal opinion. At the last meeting, after my objection was made and I explained my objection respectfully to everyone, the, the question was raised to the city solicitor who asked for more time. I had no, I had no problem with the city solicitor taking time to answer the questions two weeks ago. But she, she, I still disagree. Now, there's so much with the opinion. I disagree that it is not looked at, the state finance laws is not incorporated what I'm talking about when it comes to chapter two. I would like a ruling on my objection and then we can move on with this vote.
Yep, so with regards to the objection, uh, I don't, I think it's out of order. Uh, in essence, going by a few things. One, this is not asking us to make an appropriation, as Counselor Bacon has correctly stated. It is fixing what we have already approved in the past, which is looking at transfers to make sure we can track it. And that was approved by us. This is only adding overtime to that, uh, micromanaging, call it whatever you want. It's something that we've already approved, really adding overtime as one of the other line items to look at. Within the mayor's letter, if you look at his letter, the very last part of it, he states, uh, "I humbly request that, should you still aim to put such, uh, forward, that you will wait till a conclusion of the public emergency." So it's not that he's saying no to, he says, if you're still gonna do it, wait till after. Well, I looked to the ordinance and when we were doing it as a full body, we did amend it to January. So it doesn't take effect now. It takes effect January twenty twenty-one. So we moved it down the road to try and comply, one, with the mayor's wishes, as well as the wishes of, uh, the two chiefs that some of us spoke with prior to us taking a final vote. They raised concerns about current and said if, you know, some said wait till next budget cycle, we amended it to be January twenty twenty-one. So we found a compromise there. So for me, um, with regards to the final point on, well, it's, it's not from a, a sitting city solicitor. Uh, I understand your point to that, but the real issue is the mayor has not provided us with an option of which we have Crystal, who is absolutely phenomenal. She is the acting city solicitor. So if we don't get something from the mayor to appoint a city solicitor, anything that we get out of the Legal Department, we cannot rely on or do anything with because the mayor won't put forward a city solicitor, I'm gonna have to object to that something because Crystal is our city solicitor. Acting or not, she is our city solicitor. She's doing the job. So for me, I'm gonna take her opinion. Her opinion says that we can move forward with it. We are not, not doing an appropriation, which therefore not violating that rule. We're just doing what we have already approved and we're adding overtime to it.
Mister President?
Counselor Graney.
Uh, just as a point, we've spent forty-five minutes on this question. The counselors probably already have their minds made up on this issue. So why don't we move the question and take a vote on it?
Alright, so motion is to move to the question.
Second.
That is seconded. I will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to override the veto. If you vote no, you're, you're voting not to override the veto. Okay? Let's go in alphabetical order. Anderson Burgos.
No.
Bartley.
Yes.
Graney.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Leahy.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez.
No.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee, yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Committed.
Counselor Sullivan, you're mo- muted.
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Ten votes to override, that passes, so it's been overridden. Now we'll move on to, so that, we did take up three.
Public comment?
Public comment. Counselor Murphy, go ahead. So it gets me some time to put stuff in order. Yes, go ahead.
I, I know that I have a constituent that has a request in here, but he also would like to be able to make public comment. It's John McCann. And I know he's here, uh, so I would hope that we allow him to speak.
Yep, so next on the agenda is public comment. So with that, Ryan, for people who are for public comment, we do see John McCann. Let's open him up, uh, state name, address, and then if there's anyone else, Ryan, let me know. If there's any emails, let me know. So.
Counselors.
John.
My, my name's John McCann. Uh, my address is four one five Ingleside Street, Holyoke. Uh, I've been in a, a massage therapy yoga business for the last twenty-two years here in my house, uh, on the first floor of my house. Um, so I'm, I'm here, uh, appealing to you to, uh, push through my home occupancy permit, uh, renewal. Um, so I had, I had a problem with the, uh, state because, uh, you know, come, come, uh, this past, uh, March, uh, due to COVID, uh, I was, uh, you know, the massage therapy, uh, business were, were shut down, uh, for, for four months. Um, and that's the time I, I was supposed to put in my, uh, my application. And, uh, what happened was, I guess, the, the, uh, state, which was something I, I wasn't aware of. Uh, I always had a state massage license, but I needed a state, uh, establishment. But I needed a state establishment license, which I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. And, uh, you know, I, I've always kept my, uh, my, uh. Home occupancy current and the business, uh, uh. City business license. But this past year was, you know, was exceptional in many ways and it continues to be, uh. So that's, that's why I'm here. I'm just asking you to push it through so I can resume. Uh, I have to submit those things to the, uh, state massage board. So I can get my establishment license as well.
Right, just made a comment then.
Thank you, John. And now Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, just again, uh, Mr. McCann talked to me this weekend and one of the other issues is. Uh, the state won't let him get his establishment license unless we pass his special permit. So he's kind of caught between. Two things and obviously, uh, with all the things that are going on, he's been a reputable business for twenty years. Haven't had any issues to my knowledge, uh. And I would hope, and I know he, he asked me to speak on his behalf and I'm happy to do that. Uh, and hope that we can move this so that he can get his establishment license from the state and get everything, all his paperwork back in order. Uh, and obviously he took the time to come.
Hold on, Counselor Grady.
Thank you.
Hold on, Counselor Grady. Counselor Murphy, you're still up.
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Grady.
Uh, yeah, uh, I'd like to move that we take, uh, number eight off the table and try to cut through the bureaucracy to grant Mr. McCann his, uh.
So, okay, so the motion is to go out of order to item eight, which is the petition for the renewal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Before we go any further, Counselor Lisi had her hand up and Counselor Tomlin had his hand up. So Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. Um, I'm just a little bit confused and I hope that, um, either Mr. McCann or Counsel Murphy might be able to clarify things here. So if it's a renewal. For the home occupation, um. Does the petitioner already have the required special permit to get the establishment license or like where? Where is the hiccup? Where is the, um? I mean, I, I know we've, for as long as we've been on the council, we've renewed this, you know, many times pending all municipal fees and taxes are paid. Um, but if this is a renewal, I'm, I'm just a little bit unclear about why there is a supposed gap. Uh, I mean, we would be redoing this anyhow. So I guess that's what I'm just a little bit unclear of, like where, where is the gap coming from?
As I, as I can.
Hold on, Counselor Murphy.
As I, if I can, so it's a good question and I thought I asked the same thing, but it, it is this establishment license. He's had another state license and he was, he was, everything looked like everything was good in order. When he came and they told him, you also have to have this license, but you have to have your special permit renewed. Before you can get this license. So he can't process the establishment. As I understand it, and Mr. McCann, if I'm wrong, you correct me, but he can't get the establishment license unless. He has the home permit, special permit again. And we've always done it. Uh, and it's just kind of all the, all the kind of things that are going on with offices being closed and. Uh, not being able to make connections and not being able to follow up. I mean, he's, he's trying to get himself back where he's got everything back in order. I don't know for how much long with all the things going on, but that's basically what's happening.
But did it, I guess what I'm asking is, did it lapse? Because, um, if it's a renewal, there should be a present special permit.
I believe, I believe it. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, it's, it's okay. I mean, I think the point, the point that I'm making is getting across, like do, like, is this actually a renewal? Or are we doing this all over again?
No, this is a renewal. Renewal. This is a renewal. It's an application for a renewal.
Yeah, but do you understand the point that I'm making? Like if it's.
I do, but it, it's a renewal that. I, I think that he needs to have the renewal in place in order to go get the license for the other. So it, it's kind of. It would have been done already, however, because of the backlog and everything else with COVID. It, it's now you gotta have this in order to get the other license, which everything would have been in order except for due to timing. This is still a renewal for him through the city side.
Sure. Okay.
Thanks, McGivern.
Uh, motion then to grant the renewal pending all municipal fees and taxes are paid.
Second.
And I did just check that and they're all paid. Uh, so, uh, Counselor McGivern's hand is up. Counselor?
Uh, just on the motion that we include any conditions that were added originally to the permit.
Yep. It, it always adding the conditions from the first, uh, special permit. So with that, I'll just do a roll call. In order, because it is a special permit, now just once again go in order. If you vote yes, you're voting to grant the renewal for the special permit. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LaBour Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee, yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Your vote, you approve the renewal. Mr. McCann, you're, you're all set?
Good that it's that much license.
Good luck, John.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Have a good night. With that, we now, is, is there anyone else for public comment? Anyone in the waiting room, Ryan, or? Just so we don't miss anybody? All right. Hearing none, and I didn't see any emails on my side. Ryan, did you see any emails on your side?
I did not, Todd, and there isn't in the waiting room, so.
Make sure, say it on the record. All right. So off to communications.
Be received.
I don't, I, I missed it. I'm sorry. What did you say, Counselor?
Item number four be received.
Uh, let's first, we have two.
Yeah.
Two is.
Finance.
To finance?
Second.
That's from, uh, Crystal regarding the, uh, collective bargaining agreement. So to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now for is the fire department meetings or fire commission meetings. So receive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five is a petition for a zone change from BL to BH at ninety-one Walnut.
Same to ordinance.
Ordinance.
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Can we take six and seven together, son of both the DGR, please?
Yep. So motion is to take up as a package, six and seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six is a petition for a special permit at three forty-eight Chestnut Street. Seven. Is a special permit for a driveway at twenty-three O'Connor Ave. Those are both to DG and R. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eight, we just approved. All right, put those in order. Let me check one other thing here. Let's see. All right. So president's report, um. Let me pull up the Counselor Bartley had a late file. Last meeting. And it came in just before this meeting, the legal opinion. On fees. I think everyone got it, but just so we have it. Um. You requested an opinion from my office whether the mayor has unilateral authority to waive fees or to select fees to waive. The short answer is no. There's a variety of avenues to which fees are set, waived, altered, or amended. Massachusetts general law and the city council code of ordinances. Provide for the major, uh, majority of fees, minimums and maximums. And will determine the proper board committee or authority which would. Further regulate outside of set fees procedures already laid out within the federal, state and local guidelines. I hope this is addressing as your concern. That's from, uh, Crystal. So I just want to make sure everyone got that because that came as a late file. Counselor Bartley?
Uh, I, I'm behind Mr. Leahy and Mrs. Bacon, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. So Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I just, uh, three, three things. One, as I just want to say that the, um, the clerk's office and the Hoyt Public Schools and, uh, police department and everybody that had any association with the, uh. The election yesterday did a fantastic job. Um. I would, uh, many different precincts, I think it worked out very well. Uh, the second thing is that you wanted to give an update. Uh, Marcos and Terry Shepherd have been, um, asking. Um, when our next public service meeting is going to be held, there's a bunch of different appointments for both of those, uh. Both of those boards. Uh, Ryan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I believe it's going to be next, uh. Uh, it's going to be a week from Monday. Um, so. Put in your books, we're gonna have a public service meeting. It's always a lot of fun. The third thing is my daughter Paige, uh, wanted me to tell all of you, say that when you're muted. All you have to do is press the space key, uh, and. It unmute you and when you let go of the space key, you're back muted again. So it's easy for all kids. So having said that, thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Um, Mr. President, just to clarify on that communication that you just read.
Yep.
Is that before us now or?
No, I wanted you to, because it was requested by Counselor Bartley as a late file. He, and he wanted it for this meeting. He wanted an answer. And I know it came in late, so I didn't know if everyone had got a chance to see it. I wanted you to know that it came in. And Counselor Bartley requested that we have it for tonight's meeting, so. I was making sure you got it. That's all.
So will we have an opportunity to speak on it later under late files?
No, it, it really was a late file last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Bartley. But the request was that we get it, the answer for tonight. Correct, Counselor Bartley?
Okay, so then if my comments are in order, I simply want to make a comment, actually two comments. One, that we went through quite a process to amend all these fees because we had been. Informed that we were very late and very behind in terms of. Having them, um, in the proper way. So we went through quite a process to update them. And I would note that there are significant expenditures sitting in ordinance now, in particular. Um, salary adjustments, a very large one being sought by the mayor for his position of around forty thousand dollars. And so I find it a little amazing that he would be waiving fees when we have these other. Increases and expenses that are going on the taxpayers. So I just find it a little contradictory. And I think we should make sure that we're following our ordinances and our laws. And not getting carried away with authority under. A COVID pandemic. I think we really need to stick to our accountability within our city and our ordinances. And not think that it's all gone away because we're under these, uh, we're, we're in, under duress, I would say. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, so, um, what I want to do is, um, i- if that's not a late filed order. Then I, I, I just asked the discretion of the president to make that a late file order so that I can. So I can send that to finance. And then just to ask, answer your question you raised, I, I've. Okay, so the legal opinion is a late, is, is coming in tonight under late file. I filed a late file. At our prior meeting because earlier that afternoon I saw a press release saying that. Uh, the mayor's waiving all these fees. Um, so I was really caught flat footed by that. Um, so what I'm going to do, uh, with the finance chair's permission, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send this to, I'd like to take that late file up. I'd like to send it to finance for a discussion and I'll file a separate order. On the next meeting's agenda relative to this fee waiving. Um. Situation. Is that okay?
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll call it late filed D, because we have some late files in here. That, actually E, I, I apologize.
I, I'll make a motion now to suspend and take up late file E for the purposes of just setting it to finance.
Second.
Second.
All right, so motion is to go out of order to late file E. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that is to. That's a communication from legal with regards to fees. And that would be to send to finance.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon, yeah.
Thank you. And in the meantime, can we as the council. Urge all department heads to continue to be billing out the fees as in our ordinances?
Well, the, the, the answer to that is they have to. The, the mayor cannot unilaterally do it. Therefore, they have to just do it. They have to go by the same fees.
Okay, but I mean, he is their boss telling them not to do something, so.
I, I, I understand your point, but if they can't do that, then they have to collect the same fee that was already there.
All right, as long as we're making it clear to them that we know that too. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, hold on, I'm gonna go back in order here. There are people up. Counselor McGivern, Counselor Lisi, Counselor Anderson Burgos. So we'll go in that order. That's what I have down. Then Counselor Leahy, sorry.
Um, I was, I had my hand up when you were doing the president's report.
Yeah, that's what I'm on. If I kind of went sideways in the sense of that communication.
As long as I'm in the right order here.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to, uh, to let everybody know, I got a call from Doris, uh, Bartwell. Doris was the spokesperson, one of the leads in the opposition to. Uh, ICAR, taking over both the Farron facility, if the Farron facility was to close. By the, uh, from the sisters, uh, from Trinity. The, uh, Mount St. Vincent Nursing Home here in Hoyoke. And transferring a license that is, is much different than what the license is currently for that nursing home. Um, Doris wants us to know that DPH has made an initial decision of allowing the Farron Care Center to close. Now, prior to plan to close is you have to have a relocation that for each of the residents of the center that you're closing. And the plan states that these residents are going to be relocated to Mount St. Vincent. So even though, uh, I guess DPH is not officially okay to sale. It looks like the writing's on the wall. It looks like, you know, this, uh, neighborhood is going to be the, uh. Psych ward of, uh, of the Pioneer Valley because Bay State's still looking to take over the geriatric authority. Everybody's closing their psych wards. And everything's going to be consolidated into this one area. But I do, I just wanted, Doris wanted the city council to know they're gonna continue to write to the governor and the legislatures and. Hope that they can convince DPH that this is not a good plan. Uh, for saturation of this type of service in, in our community. Our backyard is full of this. And it's also not a good plan for the residents to be transferred and discharged in the middle of COVID.
Thank you. Counselor Lisi?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, I'm looking, uh, for. That, uh, sort of press release that the mayor put out a while ago. Um, I hope we have that with us in committee when we take up the legal opinion that just came through because I was under the impression that that was. Um, like the fees were waived by the license board. Um, for licenses, uh, like alcohol licenses that, uh, like. Bars and restaurants really haven't been able to make full use of, uh, their alcohol license in the past year. And that's why the fee was waived. Um. Again, I'm, I'm looking for it online. I can't find it at the moment, but, um, I hope we can. Bring that up side by side because I don't think that the mayor waived fees other than, uh. Kind of reporting that the license board waived a fee, that they have the authority to waive.
Anyone, Counselor Anderson Burgos, I saw your hand up and then Counselor Leahy. Sorry about that, Counselor Leahy.
I'm just gonna echo what, um, Counselor Lisi just said. Um, so basically the license board did, um, change the fees and the mayor, uh, supported that decision. Um, and I just wanted to clarify that, that that's exactly what happened.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, just quite frankly, the, uh, the license board did do it. I, I believe, uh, we all got the notice. It was October fourteenth. Um, of two thousand twenty. Um, and I, uh, I'm strongly in favor about waiving these fees. The city of Hoyoke has, uh, got, I believe, two different grants, uh, because of the COVID. I think one was for a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, the other one was for thirty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, this is what the money should be going to. Um, we have a group of people that are, that is task force. And yet I'm not, I haven't seen any reports. I haven't seen any minutes. I haven't seen anything in that, that group. Um, that's, that's, should be in order that we're going to file. Whoa. What was that noise?
I think someone sneezed. Bless you if someone sneezed.
Bless you.
Bless you, wow.
Thank you.
Scared the heck out of me. Lost my train of thought. Um, but, you know, we have these restaurants that haven't had, uh, they haven't had the amount of people that go into the restaurant. Uh, granted, they're allowed to take them. You know, other restaurants had to put up tents and people were still afraid to come out and, uh. You know, they're not, uh, they're not getting the money that they once had. So they're doing their budgeting. Granted, this pandemic, this has happened to all of us. But I, I, first of all, if this money, um, is getting waived, um, I think it, you know, city council obviously should have been a part of this, but. I strongly believe that these restaurants need all the help they can get, all these entertainment places. You've got the Hoyoke Children's Museum, you've got the Marigold Run. You have all these different places up at the mall, uh, that aren't operating and they're hurting. These people are hurting. Come on. Uh, we should be doing as much as possible. Uh, we should be doing as much as possible to help these businesses, you know, they're backbone of our community. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez.
Yes, thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. President. Um, I also want to support um, what the license board and our mayor has decided with the waiving of the fees during these unprecedented times. And to really support our businesses and and our community is just the right thing to do. Thank you so much.
Okay, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to be sure because we've had some discussions about the COVID nineteen money and how it's coming in and how it's being used. That we are getting updates so that we understand if it's happening under the emergency actions relative to the COVID, so that we sort of know what's going on. I'm sure we're all very supportive of our businesses who've been hurting and I'm sure we're all trying to support many of them as much as we can. But um, we just do need to sort of know what's going on and it's getting very murky on a number of fronts. Thank you.
Alright, so with that, to finish up the president's report, I did have a conversation with the president and CEO of Hoyok Medical Center, uh, Spiros. And he's looking to try and get more communication to us or have uh, when COVID ends, meetings for the council to get more information. He did send me uh, what they have is like quarterly information pieces as well as their uh, webpage. I'll get that over to Ryan. But he was reaching out to to make sure he has um, you know, open up communication for the full council. If there's any questions or any issues that you can always call him uh, at his number or um, through through the information that I'll I'll send you. So I did have a conversation with him on that. Um, to the public's uh, service committee, Counsel Leahy, thank you for taking up the interviews. I know there's a uh, a glitch the first time, but right away you guys came right back and and were able to get all those interviews in and and I want to thank the committee for for doing that. I appreciate it. Lastly would be uh, to our current uh, city council administrator, and that's Ryan Allen. Uh, Ryan, uh, can't thank you enough for everything. Um, just to let everyone know today, uh, Ryan reached out to me and said, I know the vote's coming up. Um, if you approve someone, uh, please know, statement from him, please know that I'll be around to help that person. They may have a two weeks after to give notice to their job or, but I will be around to help them. Um, so just reached out to make sure that we knew he'd be here to help that person, give the best training he can of them, introduce that person, other departments to make sure the transition is uh, smooth as possible in these times. Uh, so I I can't thank Ryan enough for everything he's done for us uh, over the years. I am very happy for him in his new position. I wish you all the best of luck. I know, I know you like it. Uh, for those who don't know, he's over at uh, DPW. I've called over there a couple of times now on tree issues and stuff. And he's picking up the phone and I I I think he gets scared because he's like, why, why bother me about my my new job? But uh, Ryan, seriously, thank you for everything. I'm gonna miss you. Uh, you've been great to me. You've been great to this council. Uh, but I'd like to open up to Ryan um, in order to have him, he he did ask if he could say something. So Ryan, I, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you so much for your kind words. Um, congratulations to Jeffrey Anderson Burgos and um, you know, I appreciated, it was a high honor to work for the city council um, with you guys these many years. I'm excited to continue to still be working for the city of Hoyok, the city I love. And like I said, I'm just a phone call away, just working in a different capacity for the city, but I it was, it's it's been my pleasure. It's been my honor to work with you guys and um, I really appreciate it and and uh, like I said, just a phone call away. You need anything, just let me know.
Thanks to Ryan. Counselor Bacon.
I just want to make a quick comment. Um, and I want to give some kudos to Ryan. When I was chairing ordinance, we dealt with some unbelievably complex and long agendas. And he was my right hand. Um, and we worked very closely together and we got a lot done. And I am ever grateful for the support and the follow through that he did over those years. Thanks, Ryan.
Counsel Tomlin.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thanks Ryan for the work you've done over the years and I really appreciate you keeping in touch. Uh, I've had a difficult couple of months with uh, with my wife's family and um, I really appreciate your your thoughts and prayers for that. Uh, I know you've gone through some difficult times too, but um, just want you to know that I I appreciate the work you put forth uh, for the city. And uh, still a good, willing to put forth uh, at the DPW and uh, wish you well and uh, we'll have to catch up and go out for coffee sometime.
Mr. President.
Counsel Grady.
Yeah, Ryan, myself and Mrs. Grady want to thank you for all the kindnesses that you gave to us. We appreciate you and we love you as a great citizen of Hoyok. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo uh, both everyone's words, but Counsel Bacon's words as a chair. Ryan, it's it's incredible what you do when we have to turn over and put an agenda together for a subcommittee in a matter of two or three days, somehow contact the department heads who think they're not getting enough time, which sometimes it's not your fault, but they aren't getting enough time. But at the same time, you do that with such wisdom and efficiency and and very, very few mistakes, occasional mistakes, Mr. President, but those are not what we're talking about tonight. You do, did a great job and I thank you personally for all the help you gave me, not just as chair, but as a city counselor. I wish you nothing but good luck in your new endeavor. And I know the future is going to be rosy for you because you're a bright young man.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Counsel Leahy.
Oh, bringing mistakes. I think Ryan, uh, I wouldn't say I made any mistakes. I think you did a great job. Uh, but uh, having said that, I think that uh,
You cannot be heard.
Jim, you're, Counsel Leahy, you're fading out. You're fading in and out.
Alright, alright Ryan, you've done a fantastic job. I have myself, my family, and sponsors. Congratulations. I know that this year, uh, my career sucked. So uh, next year, much better. You're gonna have a uh, better job. Uh, sorry. Uh, but I'm looking forward to see you uh, progress in your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, Ryan, uh, you you've just been a great asset uh, to the city council, to me personally. Uh, I just want to acknowledge that um, my my voting record uh, on administrative assistants is very consistent. I did not six, did not vote for Ryan the first time around. And so I lost that one and I did not vote for Anderson Burgos this time around. I lost that one. So I feel, I feel good about my uh, I feel good about my track record. Uh, but yet we had a great relationship, Ryan. You've just been a great friend. As you know, uh, I I I think, well, you know that. And then uh, I look forward to uh, working with a new administrative assistant because being a chairperson, it it just, there's a lot and um, you know, we wouldn't do it unless we wanted to, of course, but nobody has a gun to our head, but it's it's a lot of work and you made the job uh, you know, fun and uh, and and we we got through it very efficiently. Um, but I think with, if there are any errors, they were de minimis and and I I really, I really appreciate all the work you did and I know I'm going to be calling you uh, down the road and I hope your successor uh, leans on you regularly. Best wishes.
Thank you, Dave.
Counsel Anderson Burgos.
I'm not gonna get all spoochy. This is not gonna be a Hallmark moment. Uh, but let me tell you, Ryan, um, being due to the council, um, it was kind of scary and I was looking, I mean, I got my leadership from Todd and most of the counselors here. Um, but I will tell you that your support um, and your guidance really helped me, made the job easier, more understandable and more appreciative. And I can't stress enough, um, how much I'm gonna miss you. I mean, it's not like you're moving far, but I'll tell you this much. Christmas parties won't be the same, so I am going to put this on the table now that we name that darn elephant Ryan.
I like it, I like it.
Counsel. Counsel Murphy, then Counsel Leacy, then Counsel Labor Martinez.
Yeah, Ryan, uh, you know, I've known you uh, about twenty years now. I met you when you were a young man trying to play baseball on my team and 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 trying to put up with me then. Then I met you about uh, I want to say about eight or nine years later at that and you were taking my government class at Hoyok Community College. And I put up with you then. And and in both cases, it was a pleasure.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
And it's been a pleasure working with you and I know we have a shared his, or a shared liking of history and biography. And so if there's ever any more books you're looking for, you know where to go. Uh, you've been a pleasure to work with. Obviously, I knew your father way back because I coached his father as well. And uh, and his cousin and everything else. So you know, you're a class act. Stay that way. You just do well. Good luck. Thank you.
Counsel Leacy.
Um, Ryan, I just want to say thank you. Uh, you know, I I know you work really hard for our committees and uh, you you are always pleasant about it. So thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Counsel Labor Martinez.
I just want to say, Ryan, um, best of luck on your new endeavor and um, thank you for your service through the council and um, hopes to see you around anyways. So take care.
Thank you so much, Gladys.
Counsel Sullivan. You're on mute, Counsel Sullivan.
Spacebar, spacebar.
Hit the spacebar.
I got the spacebar. Yep, thank you very much, Ryan. And uh, Counsel Tomlin made a kind offer for a coffee, but the next time I see you out, I got you for a beer. Sounds good. Thanks, Mike.
Uh, I see Counsel Leahy and Counsel Bacon. Is that from before?
I'm on set.
Yeah, that was before Todd, but.
Okay.
Michael Sullivan bought with you. You're the first one ever.
Uh, Counsel Hernandez.
Yes, hi. I just want to say to Ryan, um, I'm very happy for um, your transition. You're still with the city of Hoyok. And I want to thank you for all your support when you belonged to the CPAC and gave us support there. That was my first um, interactions with you professionally. And the little bit of time that I've been to the city council, thank you for all of your support and I wish you well.
Thank you so much, Libby. Thank you.
Ryan, once again, thank you for everything. Uh, for everyone, the main reason we're on Zoom or unable to do all this is because of Ryan. When everything came down and started to kind of fall apart, uh, Ryan and I started having conversations and he said, let me look into something. And lo and behold, this is, this is what we have. So Ryan went out right away and then he went to people who didn't have computers or have the ability to do Zoom and help set them up. So, you know, Ryan, you know, thank you. I can't say it enough. You you made our jobs easier. I know of no mistakes because if there was a mistake, it's on me. I'll take full blame for everything. But I know you're not gone yet, but I just wanted you to make sure that you knew that we truly appreciate everything that you did for us.
Thank all of you so, so much. Your kind words mean so much to me. I really, really appreciate it. Look forward to continuing to work with you guys.
So with that, we will move on to committees. We did public service. Now we're on to DG and R.
Uh, Counsel.
Counsel Leacy.
Thank you. Um, I, if I may, uh, the ordinance committee doesn't have any reports out of committee, but we did meet uh, last uh, Tuesday and uh, what we started talking about was the salary study that the city undertook in twenty fourteen and seeing if we could uh, you know, make it relevant to today. And um, what we did was have uh, department heads across the city come in and talk about how um, you know, non-competitive salaries are impacting their departments or ability to attract and retain talent and actually uh, you know, make progress and gain some traction on city projects. So um, I would encourage anyone who is interested in this as an issue to uh, catch the tape on Hoyok Media. Um, it was a really sort of in informative conversation. It was really, uh, again, the the narratives, like the department heads telling the stories about how um, the, again, the lack of non-competitive salaries are impacting their departments. Uh, next time we take it up, we'll have a more um, quantitative or hard look at the data and numbers behind that study and how and whether we can uh, move forward on actual numbers. Uh, but I I think getting the the backstory is really um, informative and um, it it it's, it it was really, I think, um, it it turned on a bunch of light bulbs for me even and I and I find myself uh, you know, very involved and very sort of informed about what's happening in City Hall, but the way that uh, you know, each department was talking about the the, their inability to sort of gain traction on projects that they're really trying to move forward on uh, because of the turnover in City Hall. Um, you know, it really just brought, brought the message home. So I encourage folks to to watch it.
Alright, Counsel Hernandez, your your hand is up. Is that from prior or you have a question? Oh, okay. Just making sure. Alright, so DG and R is the committee that did have some stuff, uh, that is coming out for tonight's meeting. Uh, thirteen eighth, committee, uh, DG and R, who was referred a special permit um, for a self-service gas station at two ninety seven Applemont Highway.
Yeah, uh, motion receive adopt the committee report, grant special permit.
Motion is to receive adopt under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, good god, good conversation. Um, it was a, it's a, it's like, um, it was supported by um, oh, a people, over a hundred people signed a petition, which uh, I hope I put his, I think I put his late file for tonight. I I.
We, we have it. That is, let me find it. Give me one second.
And if we can, if that's in the jacket, we'll just, I'll make a motion. I'll take it up so we can just dispose of that.
That's late file B. So motion to suspend the rules, go to late file B.
Yep, some of.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is, late file B is a um, petition, we the undersized support the two ninety seven Applemont Highway um, gas station and it's signed off by uh, one, two, three, four, five pages of of signatures. Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, so uh, that was uh, so we heard from the public. It was a public hearing. We heard from the uh, ward counselor, uh, green lighted it. The petitioner uh, good, uh, real good on it. We we had one a butter across the street in the Zoom meeting. Uh, we uh, they they asked some really great questions. We we really felt like the the questions they they made were were answered wholeheartedly by the by the petitioner. And so without any o- opposition and seeing how this is going to be a uh, not just an economic benefit, but it's going to be a um, a a benefit to the to the motoring public, especially in that, in that part of Hoyok where there really isn't a um, a a service station. There was a service station there uh, probably ended sometime in the um, early nineties. And uh, and so there's been nothing in that neighborhood for uh, you know, going on three decades. So so this is going to be a um, going to be a winner. I I think the uh, the petitioner is from Connecticut. Uh, but he has local counsel and uh, he's got some great ideas on how to, how to dress up the place and make it a uh, make it a really nice uh, community area. So it's not just going to be a gas station. It's it's going to be um, you know, hopefully a a little, a little neighborhood place as well for uh, for for the uh, ward five uh, residents. So with that, we uh, we uh, unanimously uh, endorsed the uh, special permit.
Uh, Counsel Tomlin and Counsel Bacon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, great job, David. Um, I got a chance. It's been so many years since I've been down there, but um, after reviewing the uh, the meeting and talking to the uh, you know, the petitioner, um, I went down to the uh, the the store yesterday. Um, and actually got across the street where the uh, the the Missick family was. Didn't get a chance to talk to them, but um, told them uh, through their intercom that um, and she was actually on the Zoom meeting that uh, anything I could do to help out, um, I would do that and and talked to the manager in the store. Uh, just reassuring him that um, you know, I look forward to the uh, the gas pumps there, uh, the the new station, uh, deciding on the building, uh, some new pavement there. And just uh, the neighborhood to know that uh, it's important because uh, without that gas station there for the last ten or fifteen years, maybe twenty years, uh, people have really had to travel, people in that neighborhood had to travel either to Westfield or all the way up by the mall, the Shell Station in Hoyok. So um, uh, they're aware of that. I gotta made a nice ten fifteen minute talk with the uh, the employee in the store and told them uh, the, I gave him my card to to talk to the uh, the owner and let him know that anything we can do to help out uh, the transition of that that building, um, we will be there for him. So um, uh, I think it's uh, going to work out well for that neighborhood, especially, you know, um, the people that uh, signed for that that petition. Thank you.
Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Chair Bartley and the committee for doing good due diligence on this. And I also appreciated that they um, that the chair allowed a broader discussion about good neighbor um, and improvements. And I also appreciated that they um, that the chair allowed a broader discussion about good neighbor um, and improvements. Given that this is a business sitting in the middle of our, the residential area. And so I really think it will be a win-win for the neighborhood and I thank the committee for their work on this and I urge your support for it. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Counsel Rainey.
Yeah, uh, the, the gentleman and the attorney were very well spoken. They assured us that all safety precautions and everything for the property would be adhered to. All state laws, rules and regulations would be taken care of. The neighbors were very supportive and it was just a, a very pleasant discussion. And uh, kudos to Counselor Bartley for handling a great meeting. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, first is the uh, petition. You just wanted that received, Counsel Bartley?
Received, motion received.
Motion is to receive late file B. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to thirteen A, which is receive, adopt and grant the special permit. Were there any conditions or anything?
No.
Okay. So with that, I'll do a roll call. If you vote yes, you're going to vote for the special permit. No, you don't want to. Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Rainey.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee, yes. McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy. Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Well, with your vote, you approved uh, thirteen A. Thirteen B?
Uh, that's, that's uh, thirteen B and thirteen E are still in committee.
Let me get E.
Those are table in committee.
Okay, so thirteen C and E, they're really not here because they're in committee.
That's uh, B, B, B and E.
B, B, sorry, I, it's B and E. Thank you. C, thirteen C, the committee on DG and R, who was referred in order for a special uh, permit application. Uh, for a driveway at nine twenty-one Dwight Street.
Yeah, motion to uh, receive and adopt the, the committee report, grant a special permit with conditions.
Motion is receive, adopt, under discussion.
Yeah, um, yeah, before I go into it, I, I, I just want to make sure I, I properly, Mr. President, thank the committee for all his hard work the other night. Uh, also the ward five counselor and then the, the finance chair and the public uh, safety chair were there for the whole meeting. So. And it was a doozy. So um, so I want to thank them personally for their uh, for their input, uh, as always, because they, they always come to the meeting, but I just want to make sure I. Properly thank them publicly. Um, relative to this order, this was um, uh, a, a, a bit of a convoluted mess and um. So uh, th- this, this is a, a special permit that came in, in September. We, we couldn't get it on. Uh, the committee until the second meeting in September and October, we, we couldn't take it up, but we took it up at the first meeting in November. So I, I think we took it up in a pretty timely fashion. Um, I, I had a little feedback on that, that maybe it wasn't so timely, but it, I mean, it was. It's pretty good. We, we, you know, we got it the second meeting in September and we took up the first meeting in November. Uh, so I, I think that's pretty reasonable. Uh, so I just want to make that one small point, Mr. President. Uh, I, I, I did not appreciate the comment last night from the council, uh, but, but that's, that's okay. Um, so um, but we, we took it up and then we, we had a, a, a very good discussion after the public hearing. We got a lot of really, really good feedback from the, from the public. And as a result of that feedback, uh, we have four conditions that uh, we are attaching to the special permit. Uh, so condition one is that the um. And I, I think, hopefully everybody knows what this is. It's at the bottom of the, bottom of Dwight Street where it intersects with Linden. And um, a- and we had uh, uh. Let's see, the, the, for the first, the first uh, the first condition we had was, so there's a little park on the corner. And it turns out, one, you know, one of our counselors here investigate, because some of our counselors investigated that lot, by the way. I, I, I don't want to call out names, go, I missed somebody, but. At least three city counselors investigated that little lot. And uh, and so that little lot, uh, uh, one of the butters was, was concerned, concerned, Mr. Quinones was concerned about three things. One was the plaque to William J. Dean be maintained. So we added that as con- as a condition. That the bushes of budding his uh, bushes on the um. Oh boy, what side of the uh, what's, what direction? I guess the east side of the, of the lot, uh, the bush, the bushes on the east side lot be preserved and maintained. And third of all, that, that whatever refuse is there be properly screened from the surrounding of butters. So those, those are, were three conditions that we added to the special permit. The petitioner green lighted all three of them and the um. Um, and uh, Mr. Quinones was uh, was satisfied uh, with, with that. We had a, a fourth condition that there was some confusion, uh. But with the, ask the wrong word, but if there's back and forth relative to where the uh, egress would be for this property. The um, the community wanted, um, well, the, the city engineer advocated to be on Linden Street. And the community said, well, you know, we're going to lose some, some pretty s- sparse parking, especially if. What, uh, what they noted, the community noted w- in the um, reverse parking time, when we get some, some snow and that'll, that'll tighten it up even more. So the, the community advocated to have the egress be on Dwight Street. The um, the vice chair of the committee uh, volunteered himself and, and contacted the city engineer. And the city engineer uh, gave some feedback and, and agreed that the uh, egress, i- it would be okay to have it go on, on Dwight Street. And so, Mr. President, you, you may ask, well, why did the city, city engineer originally say to go on Linden and, and. Um, you know, judging by the email I received from the petitioner's counsel, it seemed like the city engineer was, was really pushing for uh. You, you're really focusing on, on the safety aspect, which is really the, the, one of the engineers' most important roles. A- and, and, but the city engineer, after speaking to the vice chair of the, the committee, said, well, you know, I didn't really consider the loss of uh, parking and, and that's vital too. And, and so uh, so w- with the, with the, the petitioner is okay with it going on Dwight Street. The city engineer is okay with it going on Dwight Street. The community in that area wants it to go on Dwight Street. And so the condition that we're suggesting is that the, that the egress be onto Dwight Street and not onto Linden Street. So that's the fourth condition, Mr. President. Uh, the, uh, one of the things that we were really concerned about is, is whether or not. A vehicle has to back out and, and the vice chair's committee uh, confirmed with the, with the petitioner and well, the city engineer that there's enough um. Uh, turnaround space. I, I don't know if that's the right phrase, but there's enough space for a car to turn around. So they, they don't have to back out onto Dwight. And they can go out um, nose first. Uh, so that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. A great summary, uh, Dave, and, and thanks, Michael, for talking to the city engineer. I. I, I'm the one that brought up some of the concerns about being on Linden Street, um, with the traffic coming off the bridge and that being a yellow light going up Linden. Um, I thought it, it, it would be difficult and especially losing those parking spots, especially during winter parking. Um, I'm glad, uh, and I, and I think that the council for the gentleman stated that, uh, you know, Dwight Street would be fine. And I, I feel coming down Dwight with the stoplight would be safer for people coming in and out of uh, the uh, the driveway from Dwight Street other than Linden. So I think it's a, it was a good compromise. I'm, I'm glad we have the uh, the messages there from um, you know, the. From the, the chairman, uh, that we have uh, certain things, conditions in place. Uh, and this is, this is good for the neighborhood overall and, and I want to thank Mr. Gladish, uh, that putting the uh, two family home and, and working with the, with the council on this issue. So thank you.
Uh, Mr. President.
Counsel Rainey.
Yeah, in that meeting, I also suggested that perhaps the uh, traffic light at Linden and uh, White. Uh, the coming south on uh, Linden Street be changed to a flashing red light. So I'm going to file an ordinance to uh. Change that uh, flashing uh, yellow light to a flashing red light. So you have flashing red lights on both uh, intersections, both ways. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Lisi.
Uh, thanks. Could someone from the committee let me know that if the egress is on Dwight Street, if it's still um, counts as a driveway and front yard? What like, the special permit is only for the curb cut and the driveway in the front yard, correct? And then if so, um. Do they need this permit if the, if they're being made to have the uh, curb cut on the Dwight Street side?
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, could, could you, I, I heard the question, but I'm going to need you to clarify it because uh, the, uh, what I, what I heard you say was whether or not this is still a front yard. And a- and, and the answer is, the answer, short answer is yes. But, but I'm not sure if there's a follow-up to that. If I, I, I missed the follow-up, if there is, my, I don't know if there's a second part to that question, but. The short answer is yes, it was definitely front yard. So we, we confirmed that last night or the other night, whatever night it was.
Even with the cut, even with the driveway going in on Dwight Street, it's still considered a front yard and, and therefore the special permit is required still?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yep.
Counsel McGivern.
I, I just on Counsel Lisi's question, just a little bit extra to it, because I, the, um, this was actually two lots. And what we found out was that the uh, the owner, petitioner bought both lots, which includes what Counselor Bartley was talking about. The park that was always kept and owned by O'Connell's and Sons and made it into one, one lot. Because they did that, it became a corner lot. A corner lot is considered the front of the property is both the actual front of the house and the side of which faces the other street. Which unfortunately is where they originally wanted to put this. So all we're acting on is, because we, we have no purview over curb cuts. We're just acting on the fact that it's going to be in front of the house, which is, I, I call it the Council Fair Amendment to the ordinances about ten, fifteen years ago. When some of this stuff we started seeing on North Hampton Street where all the parking was, was being put in the front yard. So it's just, it's just an okay endorsement to allow the front of the house. As Counselor Bartley said, some conditions were added. But the uh, it's a big lot now with that park being taken in.
Counselor, I see Counselor Tomlin, is that from prior or? You all said, okay, then I see Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, I just want to compliment the, the chair and the committee and the citizens for coming. I mean, that was a, a good meeting, going over. Some strategic, well, could be small problems that could have ended up becoming big problems. And I think the solution that they've come up with and the idea of going to Dwight Street and thank Counsel Sullivan for talking with, and the city engineer for being willing to change his thoughts. Uh, shows that again, when citizens come before us, we got a chance to listen and try to find the best way to do this. And I think, I just want to commend the, coming up with this solution. Uh, I drove by there yesterday and this is a wonderful solution to this issue.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, so I, I, I just want to make sure I uh, uh, so I state the motion correctly, Mr. President. So the motion is to grant a special permit with the four, with the, the, the four, a four said. Conditions that, that, that I, I, I elaborated, that they're already in the public record. So I just want to. Um, you know, normally, Mr. President, we would have the jacket and, and we would write on it and, and, or, or we'd have the uh, the updated agenda with the, with the conditions all laid out, but. Um, so I just want to make sure they're stated and I just want to, so that, that's a motion. I just want to get a second on that.
Second on that.
Okay, and then, and then just under discussion, Mr. President, I, I did hear from the building commissioner today, y- you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm not going to. And I appreciate all the nice compliments everybody's giving me. I appreciate that, but you know, I, I, as, as a couple of counselors here point out, you know, I can't be all happy talk for me. So uh, I did hear from the uh, building commissioner uh, today and we had an excellent conversation and, and um. Uh, the, the building commissioner uh, expressed, um. I, I don't, I better not characterize it. Just expressed uh, some comments to me that um, that this particular applicant, while, while we do appreciate. Uh, this particular applicant's been before us more than once on this exact same issue. And, and it was pointed out by, by one of the at-large counselors last night that this particular applicant commenced work. Prior to. Uh, any permits. Furthermore, Mr. President, this particular applicant has built other homes. Has had the homes occupied and doesn't have a certificate of occupancy from the city of Holyoke. So, I, I mean, we're, we're just going, we're just going to keep this, we're going to keep this in mind going forward. Uh, you know, we, we always appreciate investment. Uh, a- and, and uh, I, I'm the first in line for that, but uh, and I appreciate strong advocacy from, from, from uh, his counsel. I, I really do. Um, but you, you know, you, you got to go through the front door. You can't go through the side door for any of these things. A- and I, I, I hope that's true for everything in this city. And, and so I, I really appreciate, I might have put, point, I really appreciate the building commissioner calling me today. And we had a really good discussion about this project and um, there you go. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one else, the motion is to receive, adopt with the conditions, the four conditions that were read into the record. I'll do a roll call. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit with the four conditions. If you vote no, you're voting against. Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Rainey.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy. Counsel, okay. Marti- LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee, yes. McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
With your vote, you approved. The special permit. C, thirteen D. Committee on DG and R was referred in order pursuant to master law, chapter twenty-three M. The city council approve a resolution authorizing the city of Holyoke to participate in the Massachusetts commercial property assessed, assessed clean energy program or PACE.
Uh, yes, a motion to uh, receive the committee report and to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion is to receive and approve under discussion.
Yeah, so this was, this was sponsored by uh, by Mike Sullivan, the vice chair of this committee. Uh, I'm, I'm mainly going to pass it to, to Michael. I, I took some pretty good notes. So we had, uh, we had Marcos Marrero here with us. We had Wendy O'Malley, uh, who uh, uh, Ms. O'Malley probably waited uh, well over two hours to, to get before us. So I really appreciate her patience. And uh, and boy, she's, she is just really um. Wow, talk about an expert. A- and so it was, it was really great to have somebody with that much knowledge uh, to pass the line and to put what's really convoluted and complicated into layman's terms. A- and um, and so she's just going to be a tremendous resource. Uh, I, I want, I want to point out that uh, you know, the vice chair points out last night that, yes, this is. Uh, this is an, an energy related, but, but we, we, we passed it, he passed it along to um, to the, the manager, the G and E. And the manager uh, gave it a thumbs up. So that was uh, that, that was very comforting, comforting. And um. This is, this is just a, it's a, it's a loan that's uh, you know, basically repaid in, in energy savings. It's a loan that can start at a minimum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars and up. There is no ceiling on it. And uh, it, and this program just came into being in July of twenty twenty. If Holyoke, uh, Holyoke is required under Mass General Law twenty-three. To approve a resolution at, at this level. And uh, if we do approve it, we'll be the thirty-third or thirty-fourth or something like that municipality. In the Commonwealth to uh, to approve this program. And, and it's something that um, we pointed out last night that, that we hope uh, will hope. Will uh, allow uh, building owners, and we know we've got some lockers in Holyoke that, that probably could use uh, some, some investment. And particularly uh, to help with uh, uh, energy efficiency. And, and, and this is really a, a, a great, a great thing to uh, to market. So the, the hope is that the chamber of Congress will, will, will uh, get behind this. It will, it'll be marketed by Ms. O'Malley and um. And so we, we heard from her and we were uh, very excited about it. So um, so with that, I'll, I'll pass along to the uh, to the primary sponsor. Thank you.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yep, uh, thank you. Uh, David uh, did a great job there of summarizing it. The only uh, a couple of things I can add to it is. Just so everybody, uh, the rest of the members of the uh, council that might not have um, been, been at the meeting or been able to listen to it. It's, what it is is really, it's a uh, it's a tax-based financing mechanism. Now, um, the. Now, um, the, the, anybody that undertakes this, they'll be agreeing to a betterment assessment on the property tax bill. And we've also heard from the, the assessor and the tax collector. And this would just be a minor modification and no extra burden on their offices. Um, so anybody that participates in this, the betterment transfers with the ownership of the property, it stays with the property. So there's a banking mechanism in place and in, in essence, what they're doing in, in, the bank is being paid, just like a company would normally pay a bank, except it's being paid through the betterment tax, um, which is guaranteeing the payment to the bank. Uh, uh, aside from that, the, uh, the only other thing on the, the, the standards as far as who can, um, uh, what, what kind of work can be done? These, the energy savings that are generated by whatever project is undertaking have to outweigh the amount of the taxes, which to me is just a common, you know, that's a, just a example of a good business decision. You're not going to put in something that's not going to have a good return. Um, and, uh, aside from that, yeah, neighboring communities, uh, Agwam's already signed on West Springfield, Ludlow, Pittsfield, Springfield, North Hampton, Greenfield for the local ones. And, uh, um, Wendy O'Malley was great. She's going to be there and available to assist anybody that applies, uh, for this program. I, I think it's just another great example of, um, you know, what, what Hoyok and the rest of the communities can do on their own without any inside interference. And, and the great things we can put forward, uh, uh, to, to our business community. So, uh, that's about it.
I don't see anyone else's hand. So the motion was to receive and approve the resolution for the PACE program. I'll do a roll call for it. Vote yes, you're voting for the resolution. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee, yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve the resolution. That's thirteen D. Thirteen E is in committee. Thirteen F, committee on DJNR, who was referred in order that the park erect director, superintendent of DPW and the park commissioner meet with DJNR, discuss issues at Ingleside Park.
Uh, motion to the order been complied with.
Motion is to receive and that's been complied with under discussion?
Yeah, so this is Counsel Murphy's order. This, this parcels in, uh, uh, Main Street Ward Two in the Ingleside section. We had, uh, Terry Shepherd and we had Mike McManus joining us. Uh, we learned a lot about this, uh, about Ingleside Park. Oh, I, I, I'm going to make another motion too in a second, but we learned a lot about this park and, uh, and, and the importance of it, the, the importance of it to, to the, um, Ingleside area. We, we also learned that there's been, uh, uh, kind of some, you know, sort of, it, it's in sort of need of, of, of help. Um, there's some, you know, there, there's certainly things in disrepair, a bench, a stairway. Uh, there really isn't any signage there. Uh, we, we, um, we, we could certainly use some cleanup. We, we could certainly use some improved, uh, aesthetics to the, to the facility. Um, I, le- learned a little bit about the, the history of it too. Uh, got some good feedback from, uh, from Terry, uh, Shepherd. Uh, uh, we, we got some good feedback from Mike McManus. And, and before I turn it over to Counsel Murphy, I'll, I'll just make a motion. We send a, send a copy of this to the, um, conservation commission because one of the, uh, one of the things we discussed last night would be to get the conservation commission to do some tree plantings in that park from either our, our, our own nursery. Or, and I think it, although I'm not sure if it qualifies for, uh, for, for DCR, but, but certainly, uh, Mr. Glorgauer could, uh, could make that determination. Okay? Thank you.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mr. President, and thank you, uh, Counsel Bartley for taking the issue up. And I appreciate the committee taking some time. I also appreciate Mr. McManus and Ms. Shepherd for coming and hearing the concerns. Uh, it has been a neglected park and I will say that until recently, I, there was a lot of older people and not that many kids, but there seems to be people selling homes and it seems to be more people coming with some young kids. And in the past, this summer, I started seeing more people there and people were saying to me, well, can we do some of these other things? So some of the things that Counsel Bartley talked, I mean, I, uh, certainly tree plantings would make a difference. Uh, you know, there's a hill there that would make an attractive coming across Main Street where you, if we do some plantings on the hill, it would make it a much more attractive looking entryway and might attract people to, uh, go there. I, I would venture right now, there are people, people that go by that don't know there's a park because it's about, about twelve or fourteen feet off the street level, then you really can't see what kind of equipment's in there. So, uh, you know, there are safety issues, there are play issues. I know, uh, Terry Shepherd indicated, we'll try to look at something this spring and kind of look at the play equipment, see if we can upgrade that. It does need regular maintenance like anything else. Whatever park we have, whatever facilities we have, we need to try to make sure we can maintain them and, and have a regular schedule. This park really has not had a regular schedule. Uh, and we need a little more diversity in terms of, and there's also a relatively large area that's just wide open. Uh, right now, if a parent or a grandparent comes with kids, they have to basically, even with the one bench, which is damaged, but they would have to be in the sun for the whole time. So if it's ninety degrees and they're trying to take their kid out to play, the, the parents basically sitting there in the sun if they want to have a seat. So there are those kinds of things and I've made some suggestions and I, I know Terry said she'll take them up. I got a con, uh, contacted from Izzy Rivera from the Parks Commission yesterday. He's gone over these things with them and they're going to take it up at their next meeting as well. So I'm hoping we'll make some progress. Uh, I'm hoping more people will see it as an attractive, uh, neighborhood park and, and make better use of it and, and the city can maintain it. But I thank, uh, Chairman Bartley for taking it up at my request.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I'll be brief, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Um, and, uh, I, I looked at, uh, talking about this park and, and, and the, the work it needs. I think we had a good discussion with, uh, Terry and Mike McManus. And, um, uh, Terry, I've also contacted one of our new commissioners, Jose Bayron. So he's going to be looking at that too with Izzy, um, and see anything we can do. And just to note that I think, um, if the mayor's listening, we need a third park commissioner. Uh, we only have two of them and we had several appointments, but, uh, a couple of weeks ago. But, uh, the parks, uh, commission didn't have that third person. So hopefully, uh, that can happen real soon to, to, to get that third person on board. But, um, it's, it's a, it's a little-known park. It's a, it's a great area. And I think, uh, with a little bit of work, uh, sometimes things don't take much money. But I think some dedication, uh, from some of the people in the, uh, DPW and, and in, in the area, uh, maybe with the parks that, uh, they can make some improvements, uh, whatever that can be in that park for, for the, for the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Do you know other discussion? Motion is to receive, eh, it's been complied with and a copy to conservation. Is that correct, Counsel Bartley?
That's correct.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There are another committee, so therefore it's off to motions, orders and resolutions. Sixteen is from Counsel Bacon, that a traffic mirror replaced on the pole near three ninety-seven Mountain Road for residents to approach traffic when exiting their driveway. Uh, so it'd be receive, adopt, sent to DPW?
Can we receive and send to public safety with a copy to DPW, please?
So to public safety, copy?
DPW.
To DPW?
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Counsel Bartley, sorry, Counsel Bartley first.
I, I just want to offer a friendly amendment if I could, because I, I love this order. Um, and, and I just want to add a, a, uh, to three ninety-seven Mountain Road, I want to add to the, um, um, I'm just going to say, say that the top of, the Westfield Road at the top of Hitchcock Street, if I could just add that and I'll explain in a second.
So adding, adding what? Hitchcock Street?
Well, uh, it's Westfield Road at the top of Hitchcock Street. It's, it's near like one nineteen Westfield Road. I, I, I don't.
So Westfield.
Counsel McGivern knows this very well. When you go to the top of Hitchcock, it is just brutal to, you know? It's brutal to see out there, but I just want to make a comment if I could, Mr. President, once I get a second on that.
So I, I just want to make sure I added incorrectly for you. That the traffic mirror replaced on the pole near three ninety-seven Mountain Road and and Westfield Road, top of Hitchcock?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the, I, I think I tried this in two thousand fourteen. And a, and a feedback I got at the time was, uh, we, we don't do mirrors in Hoyok. Well, if, um, listen, if we can do one on Mountain Road, I, I would love to see one on Hitchcock Street because, because citizens have asked about that over the years and I, and I, I've attempted and failed. So let's see if I like to try again. Thank you.
All right. So on the amendment to add that section, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And Counsel McGivern?
I just, I agree with Counsel Bartley on, uh, Hitchcock and, or Westfield Road, I think, and Westfield Road. Anyone that travels that, and I do regular, knows how hard it is to get out. But there was a mirror in Hoyok, uh, it was some time ago on, uh, Sycamore and Cabbage Street where that curve comes around from Pleasant Street, turning into Cabbage. And I don't know how long that mirror lasts. I don't think it's there any longer, but there was one.
All right. So motion is to send to public safety with a copy to DPW as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventeen is from Counsel Bacon. It's the city engineer to evaluate the area on Lower Westfield Road near the small bridge to make recommendations to improve safety for the residents. Also the public safety?
Yes, please.
If you could add me to the order, please.
Yeah.
Sure.
Can I just ask? Counsel Bartley? What, Counsel Murphy had something?
Yeah, just since it's going to come to my committee, I just want, so we're talking about over the railroad? Is that what we're talking about? Over like where, if we were going to Mount Marie?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I'm out of my name. That's a disaster.
All right. So that would go to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, eighteen is from Counsel Hernandez at a handicap sign at one nine-nine Beach Street.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
An ordinance and a copy to
Disabilities.
Disability committee.
Same with, same with nineteen, Todd?
So nineteen as well, um, from myself for a handicap sign at one sixteen Pearl Street. So that's an ordinance as well with a copy to the committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
President, if I could suspend the rules to take up items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four as a package and refer them to the committee on finance.
Second.
All right. So suspended rules, take up those items. Twenty is a a grant, uh, justice comprehensive opioid, uh, substance abuse grant. Twenty-one is a transfer from, uh, of three thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars to vacation buyback. Twenty-two is two thousand nine hundred and seven dollars, um, to various line items. Twenty-three is two thousand six hundred eight, nine dollars, uh, from F, refuse recycling to other line items. And twenty-four is nine thousand six hundred fifty dollars, uh, to various line items. So that would be, uh, all to finance.
If I could, Mr. President, real quick.
Sorry, sorry, Counsel McGivern, sorry.
Uh, earlier tonight, we received a, uh, a negotiated settlement between the, your public works supervisors and, and the city. These transfers in the DPW budget, I was told are to, uh, to pay for that, uh, that new contract, which is what we'd be looking at. Uh, we, we've got, uh, this coming Monday, the, uh, the ninth penciled in for the finance committee meeting. So we'll have all these orders on the agenda plus we have a carryover from our last meeting, Counsel Sullivan's order on the CPA, uh, request to do, uh, grants up to three thousand dollars without coming back to us. So we'll do that for Monday's meeting at six-thirty on this, uh, this November ninth.
All right. So, uh, Counsel Bartley?
No, I, 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 okay, I, I just, I thought we were going to vote on that. I just, I want to make a point of order. So sorry, I'll, I'll wait till we vote on it.
All right. So no one else on this? This is all to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel Bartley?
The point of order, uh, on, on, um, is there a late file? Because we're, this is finance time. Is there a late file relative to the, um, audit and the management letter that we received?
If I could, Mr. President?
Uh, Counsel McGivern?
That, that's a good point because we did receive an email and I should have brought this up and mentioned it to everybody. I, I talked to the auditor. She has filed it with the clerk, but not as a late file. It will be on her next agenda.
Oh. Sounds good.
And I don't have it, so I can confirm that.
No, thanks. All good. Oh, one more point of order?
Those were finance. What was that, Counsel?
Just one more point of order?
Sure, sure.
A, and this is to, to either to you, the president, or to Joe, um, are, are we going to get a, are we going to get a communication, um, in over, before our next meeting, uh, re- regarding free cash and where we are, I mean, in my conversations with the assessor, they are very far along and, you know, I, I, I don't know why we got to wait till, uh, the holidays to, to take these votes. Every year we have to do this. It just seems like we can, you know, tackle it in November or the first meeting in December. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, um, uh, you know, set, to set the tax rate. So do, do you have a, a sense of, a sense as to where we, where we are on this, uh, Todd or Joe?
If I could, Mr. President?
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch your flat, but if I did, I do apologize. I should, I should have emailed you.
No, no, Counsel McGivern?
No, that, that's, it's a, it's an excellent question and, um, not just this time of year, but it's a little different because of the, uh, the budget status with the state due to COVID and the emergency itself. The state's been operating on a one-month budget. However, the governor did finalize his budget. Uh, yes, the assessors are very far along, so that's not going to hold us up. The, uh, school department right now has got to make a decision on what they're going to do in terms of their budget and the new, new figures with the new cherry sheet in terms of the governor's allotment for chapter seventies. But the, the auditor is pushing that we do it, you know, real quick. Like we, we be prepared to, uh, start talking about it at our, uh, first, uh, by, by our first December meeting, which would be fantastic considering what COVID has done to the state of affairs when it comes to the budget itself. But the, um, I, I haven't talked to the mayor. I have put a request in to see if, you know, if we can, I, I think we, you know, we don't have permission to go beyond this quarter without setting the tax rate. So I think we're going to have to do it because without the state permission, it becomes a fiasco like the year that we had to wait to the fourth quarter and we sent out, um, estimated bills that people didn't have to pay. So it's in, it's, it's in the works, Counsel Bartley. It's a good question and we're just, you know, we're waiting to get that final push and we'll do it.
So just along those lines, so, so Tony would have to set, the assessor, I'm sorry, would have to set the uh, assessor's board have to set the tax classification meeting and, and, and the indications are they're pretty well along and so.
Yes, the only thing they're, they don't control is, is the final, the final appropriations, if necessary, to balance the budget. He can't, he can't give us the final figures until the final budget is balanced. For example, last year, we took the vote on the, uh, no free cash. We took the vote on using the extra monies from the single property, family homes. So once we have, you know, that from the mayor and once the states finalize it, then Tony can give us the numbers on tax classification.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing nothing further, twenty-five is from Counsel Murphy. Or at the city council, request the mayor, uh, the blighted property committee and HRA move forward with, on the demolition of the Armory Building. Um, with the report just shored up of the building, what the expense would be six twenty-five. Uh, demolition estimate between a hundred thousand to one fifty. Uh, makes more sense to demolish a building and see construction of single or two family homes. Uh, Counsel?
Make a motion that it be adopted and then a, a copy to the mayor, the HRA and the blighted property committee?
Second.
Mr. President, I'd like to sign on to that order.
Okay, so hold on, Counsel Graney. We'll sign you on. Counselor Tomlin has a question?
Uh, just to sign on?
Counsel Tomlin?
Please.
And if I can? Anyone else?
Can I um, make a friendly amendment to um, the the copies, uh, send a copy to the Historic Commission, because this is in active discussion in their in their committee?
That's fine. All right, so motion would be to receive, adopt. Send to the mayor and the other committees listed, as well as a copy to Historic Commission?
President?
Counselor McGivern?
I uh, I speak against the motion. I I just saw the uh, when we talked about this earlier this year. Uh, it is of historical significance. It's an historical piece of property. And I don't think it's just because of that fact that we should give time to uh. The Historical Commission, but I think we should give time to our OPED Department. To see if they can look and find someone that is willing to incorporate. A design that would use that that part of the building that is still standing, safely standing. And to use that property as as for something that complements the neighborhood itself. I'm taking it down now is just going to give us another vacant lot. And and I think we have a chance because of the nature of the budding properties. And the and the closeness to the bank across the street, the senior center and stuff. And the uh, some other commercial property next to it on the uh, the east side of the property. To do something that would not only complement the neighborhood, but bring some good tax dollars in here. And save a partial structure of an historical building. So I think it's a little premature to adopt it tonight. I'd like to see a lot more discussion with the uh, OPED Director and and with the uh, Historical Commission itself.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I, and uh, again, I would, uh, at this point. I mean, it's been vacant for fifteen years. We've had. The facility that probably most people in Hoyoke re- relate to when they went to the Armory was the facility that fell down uh, several years ago. Uh, we've already had uh, someone going in to try to find out if the building was able to be restored. Fall through uh, and go down into from one level to another, didn't get hurt, at least not hurt seriously from what I understand. And we're talking six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we would spend. Just to s- to shore it up. Not knowing that we're going to get any of those other things. So if we're going to spend six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I would much rather be spending six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Demolishing and then starting to build some homes that would complement the other homes that are adjacent to the, where the gym fell down. Uh. And that would also bring tax revenues to us, and it would also complement uh, the rest of the street. Uh, and and eventually complement the senior center as well. Uh, I just think. Uh, you know, we have an opportunity, and the other issue here right now is that our. Our city demolition crew is down to one person, and I just found out today that. Right now, we're not imminently in position to hire the second person, which. Uh, I would hope that we would accelerate that so that we are saving money, and I know Counsel Sullivan's been a strong advocate of that. In terms of being able to make sure we take them down as safe as we can, but also as economically uh, as we can. And so that demolition crew is important. But I, again. Uh, this is also something that's there. It's not an asset to the people that live in that neighborhood. It's not an asset to the people that live across the street. It's not an asset to the people that hang around in the, in those lots of. So, I mean, I I. I can't see us. Truly thinking we should spend six hundred and twenty-five dollars to shore it up in hope that we can do something else. So I I'm hoping that we will, will adopt this and send it, and obviously it'll be up to the mayor and HRA and. And Historic Commission and and the uh, pr- build bad um, problem properties group. But I I, again, I think in fairness to the people in the neighborhood, they should have something coming and and have it coming relatively soon.
Counselor Leacy?
Which um, committee was it sent to, if any, or was it, was it not?
No, it was receive, adopt, uh, sending to the mayor. The Blighted Property Committee and HRA and a copy to the Historic Commission.
Yeah, I I mean, in some ways, I think it merits going to a committee, because um, as I just noted, the Historic Commission has this inactive um. Discussion at the last Historic Commission meeting. They were talking about proposals for what to do with it, which included like a. You know, a facade, uh, sort sort of like saving the facade and building an open market in inside. There were a number of proposals um, being considered, so maybe we need to have it in committee to hear, you know, where where is, where are those proposals and projects going? Um. It, because I I think what, you know, we could send. Sort of like this order out to Historic Commission, but then we never really get the information back from Historic Commission as to what's going on, so. Maybe it it does make sense to send it to a committee to sort of get these relevant parties in to give us an update.
Counselor Sullivan's next?
Yep, uh, thank you, um, through the chair to um, Counsel McGivern's uh. Quite, the statements about um, trying to get interested parties in and and buying more time. Um, we've had multiple RFPs out on this property uh, with no response at all. So. It just, it it just doesn't seem to be going anywhere at all, and the condition is deteriorating rapidly. To the point where it does become a public safety hazard. I I believe, and um, also through the chair to um, Counsel Leacy, I I believe the. The um. Historic Commission has in their purview, and and this may help Joe as well, uh, the ability to put a six-month demolition delay on it. So um, if we did want to get a little more time to give it one more shot. It does take a while to get uh, the process and get things in line. Um, a- and to the previous uh, statement, um, our our city demolition. Crew. Has always been just one person. We we originally envisioned it with three. We have on the uh. In our budget every year, the two unfilled positions that have never been funded by the mayor. Um. The the only reason he's had any help at all is through the grace, uh, the goodwill of the DPW, and that particular employee has moved over to the Water Department now. So that that's where we stand with all of it. So even even if we did this, approve this tonight. Um, the the Historic Commission could still weigh in on it and have plenty of time to see if we give it one more shot to get someone in the willing to do something. But I I, given how much time now that it's there, how many RFPs we've got out, I don't see it happening.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, again, ju- just to uh, to Counsel Leacy's point, uh, this was in DGR, and it was, that's how I got all the information. It came out of a DGR committee meeting. Uh, and the and the three proposals that are before the Historic Commission are what we were discussing at the DGR meeting, but we're talking. In one case, for basically a farmer's market, we were talking uh, over a million dollars total. For uh, an apartment building, and let me also say, growing up in an apartment building and knowing. The issues of health with density, I I I'm very concerned that we don't build dramatic apartment building. One of the suggestions was a twenty-four unit apartment building on that corner. Uh, that would have been four plus million dollars. And then uh, the other thing was some kind of commercial thing, and that was five point some million dollars. So all of those things. Were brought before us. Uh, again, none of that would happen if we don't spend six hundred and twenty-five dollars to shore up the building. And so we spent six hundred and twenty-five dollars to shore it up. And we may find none of those things go, and then we're going to demolish it anyway. So we basically spent six hundred and twenty-five thousand to delay demolition. I just think, I just think we need to move it. I mean, how long do people wait before they decide, before we decide? We don't have something that's going to go there. In the, in the near future. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. And uh, thank you, Counsel Sullivan. I actually uh, wrote the ordinance, or I'm sorry, I co- I sponsored the order that wrote the ordinance. For demolition delay for the Historic Commission. I won't tell you what year that was, but it's a good ordinance and it's been used well over the years. Counsel Murphy, you make some great points. I'm I'm not trying to disagree with you totally. I'm just asking for some more time, because I think we have a lot of historic structures in the city. We can't save them all. But this one's got some uniqueness to it. Not just the significance of the history. But that part of the building is where the offices were. The part of the building you referred to that caved in was a gymnasium type uh, used by the uh. By the National Guard for for a number of things, including their uh, working out and including their drills and things like that. Underneath it was a, a garage. The part of the building that didn't fall down was the office space, and there are some things. That we even looked at it, you know, Governor Weld wanted to give us the building for a dollar when cut, when uh, Mayor Dan Saskovich was in room one. And a two million dollar grant to renovate it. And uh, the mayor refused that, and he had his own reasons, but. I'm thinking now, if we ever took that, we'd have quite a building and quite a uh, asset to the community itself. There's potential there. There's been some nibbles. And the other thing is, I I know you have an order that we're going to take up in finance uh. About demolition, and I know it's been one of your strong points about. Taking down more buildings before they become not just a safety hazard, but a liability. I I'd like to see where this lies in in priority of all the buildings in the city of Hoyoke that are safety hazards. And we, you know, we need to spend the dollars for demolition wisely. And we can't, I don't think we can just pick and choose and and do it one at a time, not knowing the whole list itself. So it might not be a bad idea to bring not only the Historic Commission, the OPED Director in. But, you know, people that are on the uh, demolition committee and with the full list, and talk about how we're going to pay for that full list and where the priorities should lie. So I would make an amendment that we refer this item for the first time to the Committee on either Finance or Public Safety.
Second.
So the motion was to send. To send it to. Public Safety? And that was seconded under Counsel Leacy. I see your hand up. No, that's off.
I I would, if I can.
Counsel Murphy?
I I would, e- while I do think it's a public safety issue, uh, I think ultimately it's the finance part that. Makes this. Um. Makes my my desire to move this pro- process down. So I would, and plus there's other issues, and I know Counsel McGivern's taking up other things, so I would suggest we send it to Finance, where we're also, Counsel Sullivan and I have an order in there to deal with some other buildings. And maybe we can incorporate all of that into trying to remove. Those buildings that need to go. But I do think we need to make some decision here, one way or the other. Within the reasonable fee, if it's six months, that's fine, but we need to make a decision. And not think, okay, we're going to wait five more years here, uh, and we're going to spend six hundred and twenty-five dollars in the hope that someone's going to do it. Um, again, if it was just standing there and safe and we didn't have to do anything. Uh. I would still be inclined to move, but it's the six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to make it safe. That just doesn't make sense. But I would prefer. That's all right with Counsel.
Hold on, hold on one second. Counsel Grainy?
Yeah, just uh, you know, that one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars could be chewed up very, very fast. If somebody gets injured or killed in there, and there's a lawsuit against the city, so I think we ought to move on this.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just agree with uh, Counsel Murphy that um, you know, that the six month is is it seems like an appropriate uh, amount of time. Uh, to have this uh, looked at, um, and that uh, we should send this to Finance Committee.
All right, so a motion is to send to Finance, not Public Safety, with a copy to all departments listed, as well as the Historic Commission. Correct?
Yeah.
So all, all, wait a minute, Counsel McGivern?
Yeah, just on Counsel Grainy's point, uh, we're we're not ordering this to be demolished. We're just recommending it. And uh, the, you know, the city and 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 the powers that be in the city have a right to uh. To start a demolition process if they have the correct monies available. We, they don't need our vote. This is just as Counsel Murphy has been very keen on, is is bringing it to the city's attention. That there are a lot of buildings that are becoming liabilities, and I agree with Counsel Grainy, you know, the liability is foremost. But whether we vote on this or don't vote on this, doesn't mean the city's going to do it.
All right, so motion is to send to Fin.
Maybe, maybe we should urge the city to do it, or, you know, from coming from the city council, because. Uh, you you know, I think it would be a good idea to maybe urge the city to do it.
If I can make one last point.
Yeah, Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, and I agree with Counsel Grainy, because that's all I was trying to do is is say, look, this is, we know what the facts are. And and this is what it's going to cost to do this. And unless we've got something we know is going to happen, you know, we need to move, and we encourage you to move on demolition. That's that's really what the order's about, to try to get. Those that can make that ultimate decision. Put it on their docket and let's get it moving. And I know, uh, you know. Uh, redevelopment authority originally thought maybe this is going to be something, but I, you know, I mean, every, they come, every time they come, it's not something that they have anything. Legitimately in front of us. So again, I I haven't, I'll say, I'll send it to committee, and I obviously I don't think the demolition would have taken place until sometime next spring, but I do hope. After we hear all the discussions, if we don't have something lined up. That's a reasonable program, a reasonable project, and something we can afford, that we move on getting rid of it. Thank you.
All right, to to Finance, all those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Twenty-six is from Counsel Murphy and Counsel Bartley. Order that the Health Director, Building Commissioner. Representatives from the Police and Fire Department meet with the Public Safety Committee. To consider a request by Williams Auto to create a locked-in fence at the alley entrance. On Hampshire Street between High and Maple. And also another locked fence at the norway line of the property of four twelve and a half Maple Street.
Make a motion that we refer to Public Safety Committee?
Motion is to send to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Hi.
I see hands up. I'm sorry, did I miss people or?
If I could, real quick.
Counsel McGivern?
I just asked the chair that we invite the uh, Fire Department, the Police Department in. These alleyways are about public safety vehicles having access to the alleyway itself.
Yeah, they're listed, they're listed.
And and any of the uh, budding neighbors would also be uh, be told about it, because they half own the alleyway all the ways up to the, up to Sergeant Street.
Mr. President?
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I I've 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 met with the, a couple of the property owners. I I was in the alley uh. When the various problems that they're talking about were taking place. Uh, we ha- we have already had a preliminary discussion with the Fire Department. Uh, and that's why I did want to invite Police and Fire. I want to make sure we're all set with the Board of Health and the Building Department. Uh, it appears that most, all the way to four, four twelve and a half was a property owner on Maple Street. Uh. Who was asked that it ended his property, which would then go to a building that's owned by one Hoyoke on Sergeant Street. And, you know, there there's, they got a process, the Fire Department, Police Department have both talked about it with seeming to be supportive. It would prevent people from using, I mean, there was trash dump, there was all kinds of of needles. We had a tapestry go in there and try to clean it up. Uh, there's all kinds of human waste in there. Uh, and, you know, they're trying to run a business, the property owner's trying to run his apartment building. Uh, so, I mean, that's the goal here, and uh, I thank Counsel Bartley. He kind of got me in touch with Mr. Williams, and I thank Counsel Bartley for co-signing.
So mo- uh, Counsel Le.
If I could, if you care, uh, just uh. Give a question. Um. So I've been told that for years that a property owner owns, you know. The alleyway. And so I thought, do they? Are they assessed the taxes on that? Is that part of your square footage? It's just be that going.
Question.
Yeah, that will, I, that we can find out from uh, the assessor.
Because. It's a tough interview for this conversation, but if I own half of the alley. If I'm not paying taxes on it. If that's not affecting my square footage, why would I be responsible for it?
Yeah, we can find out. We can get that answer. We'll get it to the committee, too.
I'll ask. I was just curious. Thank you.
Good question.
See no one else? Uh, to Public Safety then. All those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? We do have some late files. Don't run away yet. Uh, late file A is from Counsel Leacy. Order that the Hoyoke Code of Ordinance is seven point ten marijuana facilities be reviewed and amended.
Uh, receive and send to ordinance, and then under discussion, if I may say a few words.
All right, so to ordinance and Counsel Leacy?
Thank you. Um, so we have about like eight to ten different o- orders that relate to our marijuana ordinance, and I was talking with Ryan about how to. Notice these orders. And and make it so that it's affordable to get these into the newspapers and and. Um, what we decided to do was just file one order, which I just filed, that is, let's take a look at the entire. Um, section that governs marijuana, and that way we could just notice it with that one order. Um, and all of the other issues related to the special permit process, delivery, setbacks. Uh, would be covered by that one sort of reference to the full uh, order ordinance. So just uh, wanted to clarify for folks and uh, let folks get a heads up that uh, we'll be taking up the many various orders related to marijuana in committees shortly.
Okay. Anyone else? See no one else? So late file A to ordinance, all those in favor? All opposed? B was the petition. B was the petition. C is a special permit for one oh-two Beach Street. This is a series of emails that we're going back and forth on, on this one, having to go back. So we file as a late file to come back in to be acted on. So to DGNR?
DGNR?
All those in favor? All opposed? D. Hold on a second. D, I think we all got this as an email. To it may concern, enclose a lawsuit that states that Hoyoke four twenty has illegally obtained. Its special permit from Hoyoke by submitting false information on the application pages eight and nine. And then it's a copy of the land, land court, a, uh. Case. So send this to ordinance, maybe? Counsel Akin, no?
Is it just informational?
I think it's just information.
We're not a party, right?
Doesn't look like we're a party, but Chris, Crystal's here.
Send it to legal, so they could just have it on file? I don't know what we're gonna do with it.
Crystal, do you wa- you want this, or?
So I have a copy. I actually also sent it to the council as a communication. We received it anonymously as well. I think it's just. We're not a party. It's just bringing to the forefront the fact that there is something going on with this business, and there may be grounds to. Pull their permit or something further should be looked into with their permit. Um, it's a myriad of information from a lawsuit to, uh, just miscellaneous communication that was sent to us, but. Just forwarding it along. I'm not sure who gave you that copy, but my copy also went out to the clerk's office, um, today or yesterday, so I'm sure that. You're probably gonna get it in duplicate. I think it was sent to a few departments.
We got it yesterday.
So do I just to receive this and?
I mean, for now you can receive it. I don't, you know, it's, it's to the body what you wanna do with it. I don't. You know, I, I think that they have a permit that's out there. I think it's for the council to kinda review the documents before you. And determine what you'd like to do moving forward.
Why, why don't we receive it and refer it to committee counsel Lacy?
Yeah, thanks. Um, so given that we are being noticed that there is this, uh, pending litigation. Um, would we be noticed when there is a, a, uh, an outcome of sorts? Because I think, um, you know, we just need to receive this, and I think what we, what we would be interested down the line is if there's an outcome. Then we would wanna act on that outcome potentially. Um, but right now, it, it just, I, I do think it's just a sort of notification and a heads up.
Yeah, I think it's up to the CCC to really kind of notify us if there's any major red flags. Um, I haven't looked into that litigation further. I don't know where it is. In the status. Um, I don't know what, what part of that litigation is, is happening right now, but. In general, with these companies, we leave it up to the state to really do the deep digging and, um, let them notify us. When we need to take action, but I thought it was pertinent since we got it in the mail to just forward it along as a communication, as I'm. It appears somebody else has done as well, so.
Thank you.
Alright, so motion would be to receive and then we'll wait for an update. All those in favor? All opposed? We did do late file E. I don't have anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn. All those in favor? Everyone have a great night and a great week.